And then I'll ask Councilman White to fill lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everybody please stand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Heavenly Father, we approach your throne room this morning with a sense of gratitude, as well as thanksgiving for the blessings that we enjoy in Christ. Even on this cold February morning, we anticipate the warming of the weekend. But also thank you that your presence always continues to warm our hearts. I thank you this morning for this community that is so vibrant and dynamic, and I pray that your favor will continue to rest upon her. Thank you for these leaders who are servants of this community. I pray that with everything they bring to this offering, that they are acknowledging that your presence is impressively paramount in their lives. I pray, Father, that they will always, along with the knowledge that they have gained, seek for your wisdom, along with the experience they lived. They also will ask for your insight. As well as, Father, with the natural leadership giftings that they have, they will always pursue the leading of the Holy Spirit in their lives. Thank you, Father, for you give grace to the humble. So we humbly ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For forty years, the Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns has been helping us here at City Hall deal with all sorts of issues as we continue to make this city more accessible. And for the past nine years, Pam Henry has been chairing that committee for us. And Pam is stepping down as the chair, and we have decided, you know, we can't just let this day go by without honoring her and reminding the citizens of Oklahoma City how well they've been represented by Pam's leadership. Pam, if you would come forward, and let us bring the rest of the committee members that are here today. You can see Pam has a lot of friends when it gets right down to it. We have a proclamation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Pam Henry's lifelong dedication to addressing the needs and challenges faced by those with disabilities began in 1959, when she was the National March of Dimes poster child, and she was notably the last poster child to suffer from polio. Whereas Pam's physical challenges never impeded her scholastic achievements, she was named the outstanding speech student at John Marshall High School in 1968. And a year later, she became a member of the top ten freshman women and named the big woman on campus at the University of Oklahoma. Whereas Pam graduated from the University of Oklahoma with a degree in broadcasting and pursued a career in journalism that included stops at KTOK, WKY-TV, now known as K4, KSWO, KOCO, KWTV, and OETA. Whereas Pam's thirty-year journalism career is distinguished by several firsts and dozens of industry honors, including the first woman in the KTOK newsroom as a radio news anchor in 1971, first woman in the WKY-TV newsroom as a news anchor in 1972. Awards from the Associated Press and Sigma Delta Chi, the OETA Bravo Award, the Oklahoma Chapter of the American Women in Radio and Television Lifetime Achievement Award in 2002, an induction in the Oklahoma Journalism Hall of Fame in 2004. Whereas Pam also served as press secretary to state representatives Wes Watkins and Gupitoyle candidate Ron Schatz. Whereas Pam's public service career has been as long and impressive as her career in journalism. She has served on countless boards and commissions and has been a tireless champion for charitable causes in improving the lives of those with disabilities in Oklahoma City. She is a member of the MAPS Three Sidewalks and Trails Citizens Subcommittee, Oklahoma Independent Living Council, Goodwill Industries Board, Oklahoma Regional Transit Dialogue Steering Committee, Governor's Advisory Committee on Employment of People with Disabilities, and has been the longtime chair of the Oklahoma City Mayor's Committee on Disability Concerns. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, hereby commends and thanks Pam Henry for her many years of public service to our city and her unwavering strength and commitment to the furtherance of disability awareness and equal opportunity.
Let's show our appreciation as a city for Pam Henry's service. Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank these hardworking people who give their time volunteering to support people with disabilities. And I still say Oklahoma City is a fabulous place for a person with a disability to live and work and get around. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Pam. We're gonna miss you. Each month, the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City helps us honor one teacher throughout the City of Oklahoma City as our Teacher of the Month. And this month, we're gonna honor Ken Yell Waiters of the Putnam City School System. So Ken Yell, you wanna come up? I know her principal, Lee Rowland, is here from Two Lakes Elementary School. Mr. Rowland, we appreciate your attendance. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Ken Yell Waiters has been named the Teacher of the Month for February 2014 by the Putnam City Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Whereas Ken Yell graduated from Langston University with a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education. Whereas Ken Yell has been an educator for four years and teaches fourth grade studies at Two Lakes Elementary School. Whereas Two Lakes selected Ken Yell as their Teacher of the Year for the 2012-2013 school year, and the Putnam City Schools Foundation has recognized Ken Yell as one of the district's top five excellent educators. Whereas each year, Ken Yell designates her students as her class of excellence and reminds them each day that they are there to achieve and to be the best they can be. Whereas Ken Yell has that special gift to ignite the spark in all of those young minds, and she is committed to helping our youth gain the necessary educational foundation to pursue their goals and dreams. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Ken Yell Waiters on her selection as February 2014 Teacher of the Month by the Putnam City Schools Foundation and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
And let's show our acknowledgement of Ken Yell's wonderful honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry. I would just like to definitely thank the School District of Putnam City, the Putnam City Foundation, Ms. Caroline Gistin, the Rotary Club. I do believe that our district is truly a beacon of light in the state of Oklahoma. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my principal, Mr. Lee Rowland, who leads, guides, and holds me accountable to being the best teacher that I can possibly be for our children. So thank you very much, and thank you.
You're welcome. And technically, we have to vote on this. I kinda got a little bit out of order there. I need a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Now let's show our appreciation to the Teacher of the Month. We also have another young lady that we're hoping to honor today, Jessica Caldwell. Do you wanna come forward, Jessica? You may know that the Boys and Girls Clubs, each Boys and Girls Club selects a Youth of the Year, and Jessica was that Youth of the Year of 2013 from our local club, and then she was named the state winner. And just to kind of acknowledge and explain and illustrate a little bit more about Jessica's story, we have a videotape that we'll run and let you learn a little bit more about
I wake up at like five o'clock. I iron my clothes. I get dressed, brush my teeth.
The day starts early for sixteen-year-old Jessica Caldwell. There is no help from mom or dad. She does it all. She's always done it all for herself and her siblings.
There was points when I thought my life was normal. Like, I thought DHS coming to my house was normal, because my mom, she didn't have a job or anything, and my dad was in jail most of the time. So I knew DHS, like, they gave her food stamps, and they paid for the Section Eight house and then everything. And that's how she got her money, was from them. But I thought most people did that. I thought people just worked for a luxury to socialize. I didn't really know what working actually was for. When he went to jail, I thought those were vacations. I did not know that was jail he was going to. And so I was like, he goes on a lot of vacations. Why can't I go on a lot of vacations? But as I got older, like about twelve is when I started to realize that this, not everybody gets abused, and not everybody, like, has their mom with boyfriends coming and going all the time, that having roaches, mice, maggots, all that stuff that we had, not everybody else had it. Very few people in this neighborhood are ever starting. Most of them don't work.
Jessica catches the bus to school before the sun comes up.
I'm really excited to get out of here.
Education is her ticket out of the projects.
This is just for a certain time. It's not for forever.
In May, Jessica will graduate high school at just sixteen years old.
If you just keep thinking forward, then the past, it's nothing in comparison.
It wasn't long ago Jessica had big plans to drop out of high school, unmotivated, suicidal. Then Jessica Caldwell found hope at the Boys and Girls Club of Oklahoma County.
When I first came to the Boys and Girls Club, I kinda thought it was like a daycare thing. I was like, Kay, I'm fourteen. Go into the Boys and Girls Club.
Drawn in at first by the fitness club, Jessica found purpose volunteering with younger kids, helping them with reading and homework, and working in the kitchen.
She's amazing. She has so much potential and so much drive to accomplish a lot in this world, and I absolutely know she will do that.
And for the first time in her life, Jessica found a family of mentors at the Boys and Girls Club. President and CEO Jane Sutter has watched Jessica grow and mature and overcome the obstacles of her past.
I know that those are things that have happened to her in her past and somewhat currently, but that I know that she can rise above those situations, and she's just amazing.
Finding a support system outside of her family at home has been a critical step for Jessica Caldwell.
There's a lot of successful people who came from situations like hers, that's very successful and very wealthy, and they made it, and they're doing what they wanna do with their life. I think she can do it.
They're always encouraging me and believing in me, and because they believed in me, I believe in myself now. And they're part of the reason, a big part of the reason, that I am like who I am now, and I have all these plans.
Plans to go to college, to become a writer, a journalist, and a mentor to troubled youth.
Without the Boys and Girls Club, I wouldn't be where I am now, being as successful and all the opportunities that I have.
Congratulations, Jessica, on the many steps you have taken to overcome adversity.
I recognize her strengths and her desires to do better and to help her reach her goals, because she's gonna go a long way, and all we need to do is be there to help her open the doors.
We are so proud to announce Jessica Caldwell is the 2013 Youth of the Year for the Boys and Girls Club of Oklahoma County.
Let's show our appreciation for Jessica and her story. We have a citation. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas the Boys and Girls Clubs of Oklahoma have selected Ms. Jessica Caldwell as the 2013 Youth of the Year. Whereas Jessica has faced many challenges in her young life, shuffling through eleven foster homes in her early teens, setting a goal for herself to drop out of school as a ninth grader as a means to escape that revolving door of foster families, and ultimately a suicide attempt. Whereas it was at this critical time that one of Jessica's foster moms brought her to the Memorial Park Boys and Girls Club, and it was there that Jessica made an incredible transformation. Whereas Jessica developed positive, encouraging relationships with staff and other members of the club. She found joy in helping the clubs chef Shay, serve snacks, and meals to the kids in the club dining room. Whereas Jessica became engaged in the Boys and Girls Club's writing club, writing couplets for the published book, Oh Is for Oklahoma, which includes photographs from award-winning photographer David Fitzgerald. Whereas through club staff recommendations, Jessica joined Leadership Oklahoma City's Youth Leadership Skills Program and was selected to serve as a legislative page at the Oklahoma State Senate. Whereas instead of becoming a high school dropout statistic, Jessica became dedicated to her studies at Metro Career Academy and graduated at age sixteen. Whereas, working toward her new life goals, Jessica has now completed her first semester as a full-time student at the University of Central Oklahoma, where she is also employed in the campus financial aid office. Whereas Jessica was named the Memorial Park Boys and Girls Club Youth of the Year, which was followed by being named Oklahoma State Youth of the Year for 2013. Whereas the mission of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Oklahoma County is to inspire and enable all youth, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. And it is evident that Jessica is committed to the ideals of service and is well on her way to reaching her potential. Now therefore, Mick Cornet, the mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby commend Ms. Jessica Caldwell on her selection as the Oklahoma State Boys and Girls Club 2013 Youth of the Year.
First, I would just like to thank everybody and Mayor Mick Cornet for allowing me to come here today, and I just wanna give a special thanks to Ms. Jane and Mr. AJ, because I wouldn't be here without them. They encouraged me to just go above and beyond and not just do what meets a certain task, to just go above in everything. And I know that they're always there for me, like, I can always count on them. So thank you.
There you go. Thanks very much. And I wanna thank Councilman Greenwell for bringing Jessica's story to our attention and allowing us to honor her this morning.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say this, Mayor. I've had the pleasure of meeting some very successful professional athletes and very successful business people, but I'm not as impressed with them as I am with Jessica, having learned about her life. And also, I learned this morning, her goal is to become President of the United States, and I wanna be the first one to get in her campaign, because I know she'll do a great job with that as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. You have to go back to school today, Jessica? Okay. Well, thank you for coming down this morning, allowing us to meet you. Well, on item four of the council agenda, it's the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 28th and February 4th. And item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 21st. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuance.
Mayor, a couple of this morning, on page eighteen, under item 8A1, 8A1, page eighteen, PC 10360, staff has been in contact with the applicant, and this item should be deferred until February 25th. And then on page nineteen, 8B3, CE 871, due to an error in the mailed service, staff requested this item be stricken. The item will be reintroduced at a later date.
Which one was that?
That's item 8B3, CE 871 on page nineteen. And then on page twenty-one, under item 8F1, item A 1415 North Klein, we ask that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then under 8H1, item B 2315 South Harvey, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item G 725 Southwest 67th Street, we ask that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's reassess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Any comments or questions on the MFA?
Would you add a second?
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, three items. Comments on any of the items under the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn as the OC PPA and convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just two items today. Comments or questions on the EAT? All right, cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations? All right, anybody else?
AO, AP, and AQ.
AO? Ed, did you say AO?
AO, AP, AQ.
OP and Q, okay. Pat, you wanna get us started?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is just a comment. These, there's a series of projects here that cleans up some of the monies from the old bond issues, puts it back to work. And my question was, will this finish up the bond issues that we've referenced in here? Or is there still some dollars in it? But one, we took three cents out of, and I wonder how long it took or how much it cost us to maintain that three-cent ledger.
Our accounts are very accurate, and when we get some interest allocations on it, they make sure they go into the right accounts, so they don't get...
I'm concerned about that three cent.
You are correct. There have been some small dollars that have been put back into accounts based upon that. We have been very intentional over the last few months to close out a number of the older accounts that are out there, because you're correct, there were small amounts hanging. And Craig or Doug, can you tell us exactly what we've got?
I know, we're very intentional though about getting those cleaned out, and we're...
Is this something like, is it bookkeeping of keeping, maintaining?
Yeah, no, I understand that.
We need the money.
There's not that much money. It's really not that much money.
All right, Ed?
Just wanna ask Brent some questions about TIFF II and these three projects, which is about twelve million dollars' worth of awards. And really, the idea of how we decide whether to give loans or grants, and how that formula all works out, and just, my understanding is that this TIFF district would allow investments or incentives within an area between North 13th and South 25th, Western and I-235?
Yes, sir.
And of that, we've collected, we have budgeted about ninety-three million dollars, and we have about seventy-eight point two million allocated?
That's correct.
And of this, basically, we set the property value in the year 2000, and then as the property value increases in that area, we're able to use that increase in property value to work on these projects.
Yes, sir. The fundamentals of TIFF, as we went in in 2000, identified an area. At that time, we, the county assessors, identified all of the appropriate properties, and they created what they call the base. And then, as time has passed, as investment has incurred within TIFF District Number Two, property values have grown, which generates the increment to the TIFF district. When developers come to see us about investment, they, about a TIFF investment in their project, we have a process which we go through. We have a TIFF advisory panel that's comprised of myself, Kathy O'Connor, the planning staff, Joe Van Bullard, our attorneys, we have a city engineer that's involved also. We go through that, and we analyze the project from a planning perspective, we analyze the project from an engineering perspective, and we look at it from a financial perspective. And what we try to do there is we look and see if there's a real financial gap to fill that, and we utilize TIFF to do that. Historically, TIFF has been used to provide a gap in the form of a development and sending payment to them. And in the case of the last couple of years, we've gone to where we, and if that doesn't fill all of the gap, we provide a loan. And that's what we're doing on some of these today. The idea is that the loan will be paid back over time. And that's historically what we've done on that, and that's typically, I mean, that's just, that's just kinda maybe do it.
So we've used it to incentivize housing and help get those deals done, the Forest Street Apartments, Level Edge, Level West, Film District, bought land in the Cordishore area, etc.
Yes.
Of the seventy-eight million, how much has been spent north of the river and the thirteen blocks north of the river, and how much in the twenty-five blocks south of the river? Let me ask it another way.
Okay.
Has any of the money been spent south of the river?
No, sir. But we have, we've had other projects that have occurred in there, actually TIFF District Number Six, we had a project down there. That was south of the river. We've been working with O-triple-C to have a facility down in the Capitol Hill area. That project's been put on hold at their request, but this council has allocated funds for that, but we're waiting on them. Other than that, I cannot think of any. That's the only one.
So how do we, so looking at these projects, and the one, I guess the one that troubles me the most maybe is the Twenty-One C Hotel. We've heard a lot about this redevelopment of the... We've heard a lot about this redevelopment of this property. It's a $52 million property. We don't really hear in the media that 26 million of the 52 million is tax incentives and tax dollars, state and federal historic tax credits, and then today, $5.3 million in TIF funds. So, of this 5.3 million, I guess 3.3 million is in the form of a loan, and then 2 million is just a grant.
2 million is in the form of a grant that will be provided after they have completed the project. 3.3 is in the form of a loan, which will come with a mortgage on the property, along with a personal guarantee on the property too, or a guarantee on the property. And so, we're providing that. It's a 20-year note, with the first seven years being interest only, and then the last 13 will be paid out over a 13-year amortization.
And the interest rate is very low, it's zero point...
It's a half a percent for the first seven years, and then, starting in year eight, it goes from, there's a floor of three, and a, yeah, floor of three and a ceiling of five. But it'll all be dependent upon what the interest rate is in the 85th month.
So, I guess, my hesitation is, it seems that these particular investors would have the capacity to go to the bank and get the financing. To make the, you're trying to get the return on investment increased to the 6% to 10% return range?
That's typically what we try to do.
Okay. Why not just give an interest-free loan? Why not, instead of giving, writing a $2 million check to these particular developers, why not give an interest-free loan, and then have the $2 million repaid to us, which we could then use for another project?
That's one approach that we could take. I would have to, I mean, every deal's a little different. We have to look at the cash flows of the project, and I think we'd have to analyze it from that perspective, see if that feature actually works. I understand, based on our discussion last night, that you, you know, the, you want to recycle the money, we understand that.
It just seems to me that if you're trying to get them between that 6% to 10% return range, that you could still do that if you gave them an interest-free loan. Same thing with, now, on the Century Center, today, we're giving $1.25 million grant and $800,000 in loan? And then the Journal Record is, what's that breakdown?
On the Journal Record, that's all in the form of a incentive payment.
That's all a grant?
Yes. And in that, it's the redevelopment, the redevelopment of the Journal Record building itself, and the development of a 409 space parking garage.
Okay. Well, I guess I would, I would just ask that we look at this in earnest. What are, what is the, at interest-free loans and trying to recycle the money, and try and figure out if we can still get people within these returns and recycle the money for additional projects? And then, just as a final question, I mean, there are those on South 25th that have been working for years to try and find financing for, like, a public plaza on 25th and Robinson. I mean, is that something that they could come to you and ask for? Is public improvements like that within the purview of these TIF funds?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket?
I'll make one comment. As Chairman of the Economic Development Trust, we look at these things very carefully. And I would, I would like to comment that Brent makes a very detailed analysis of the financings that we are involved in. And there's always a "but for" philosophy, "but for the TIF money, the project wouldn't go." And "but for the low-interest loans, the project wouldn't go." And he makes a really thoroughest analysis, and he does an awful lot to protect the integrity of the city's funds as he goes forward in projects. I think you ought to come to some of our meetings sometime and listen to the analysis he makes, or have him explain the analysis he makes on these projects to you, because they're very detailed, very thorough, and there's a great interest in keeping money the city puts up safe and in a good investment. So, I just, it's not just a casual, well, they want money, so we'll give it to them kind of thing. There is a thorough analysis done beforehand.
All right, ready to vote the consent docket? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. I'm around to the concurrence docket. Comments or questions here from council or anyone else?
Second.
All right, cast your votes.
All right, oh, okay.
Okay, passed unanimously. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I had, I just had a comment about the item V, the Park Avenue Retail Enhancement Study. I mean, I don't really have a question about it, other than, it seems like this is, this is an issue that doesn't really have a problem, but we're, but we're, but we're hiring a consultant to try and fix a problem that doesn't exist. Because, as I was reading the memo, the problem is, is that these properties are being used in a way, they aren't being used for as much retail as we would like them to be used for, even though they're not, and, you know, I would totally think that this was a good idea if, say, Park Avenue was vacant, you know, vastly vacant, but it's not, and it seems like it's going in the right direction. It seems like it's going, you know, I know that Park Avenue is part of Project 180, there's a lot of public improvements that are planned and have already been done, and, so, I think that's, I mean, it's only, we're only talking about $40,000 that, that, well, $40,000 that the Economic Development Trust is putting up, and so, further $40,000 is from other entities. So, it's not a huge budget deal. It's just kind of the concept of it. Yeah, I mean, there was a line in the memo that said that we're losing an enormous, it's an enormous lost opportunity for sales tax generation, and it just seems odd that that's where we're, that's where we're focusing, whereas, it seems like we should be focusing on helping promote the economy in the Economic Development Trust, which I think Park Avenue right now is going in that direction. It is, it is doing things in a good way, maybe not in a sales tax way, but in a, I mean, I just drove down it this morning before I came in, just to, just to make sure, and it seems like it's, seems like it's doing okay. But, you know, I, yeah, so, that's, that's, that's my thoughts.
James, I had some of those same concerns, actually, and the planning staff came in and met with me, and really suggested that it is the key to downtown retail, is to having a plan and making sure we maximize that, because it's such a key to a couple of blocks in the downtown area. And to get, if you get that right, then it'll, it'll go on from there.
You know, and there is, there is retail there.
There's some great retail there.
I know.
By the way, PK Parks and, and, yeah.
Whereas it, I don't know, there probably wasn't any retail there 10 years ago.
Right. But coming up with good, sound planning decisions for those building owners to help them maximize that, I think is the goal, is to come down and, and what can we really do? Because it is, it is such a critical piece of our downtown, of our central downtown business district. And if we, if we do that right, then the rest of, the rest of it will follow suit.
Right. Does some of it seem premature, though? I mean, unless, it seems like unless you figure out the First National question, what's happening there? So much of the front edge is the First National.
Right. But if you have the plan in place, and it can be given to the First National people as they do their redevelopment, it's been explained to me that it is not premature, that that needs to be done, to help them maybe, in the direction as they go.
If I may just add a comment, I'm interested to see what this study is going to say, because I have some personal opinions that it's going to be challenging, I think, to re-energize retail sales in the core part of downtown. I hope we're successful in that regard. Many major cities have a very strong retail facility in the core. I'm not so sure that we're going to see more retail developed, say, on the edges out west. As we looked at the 21C Hotel, I think it's going to continue to draw things out west, as well as south, once the Boulevard gets developed. I see that as a great potential for retail. But I'm hopeful that we can recover the retail and re-energize it along Park Avenue and other streets within the core part of downtown. So, I'm interested in seeing what these consultants have to say.
Can we ask, you're paying for the other half, so, do you think that it's premature before you know the First National question to invest $80,000?
I think one of the things that really makes this particular study key right now is, we, we do have some retail on Park Avenue. Part of the problem with it is that none of it talks to the street, none of it talks to the sidewalk. It's, for example, any of the retail spaces that are in Leadership Square, you know, you cannot get to them from Park Avenue, you have to go inside Leadership Square. And that is the same way with First National. Any of the retail that fronts on that block, you have to go in, inside there. Same with the Oklahoma Towers, same with Robinson Renaissance. And I think a key component to this study is, is that it's going to be looking at not just what retail businesses should go there, not just about what the businesses should be and what the mix should be, but what the overall use should be, and how that should relate to the street, and, you know, make it more convenient for people to, to shop. And so, I think that the study is not premature at this point. I think that you, it's also designed with some things that DOC C is interested in, in terms of connecting that retail to Broadway, and then looking further west, that gives us an opportunity to do this piece in the core, and then add on, if you will, with some of the things that we want to look at in terms of retail development downtown.
Have we done similar retail studies in other parts, Automobile Alley or Film?
We have talked to other retail consultants about, about doing this. It's, we have not conducted a study, this will be the first one that, that we have actually done, and it was a decision to, when we looked at, when I first got here five years ago, we looked at Broadway, Park, and West Main as the three big opportunities for retail development in downtown. And I want to make sure that when we talk about retail, it's, in my mind, it's more about street activation and making things on the street that are interesting for people to walk by. It does not have to be necessarily a dress shop or a shoe store, some of those types of things, but things like, it's a combination of making sure that there's a continual activation of people walking down there. One example is what the Oklahoman is planning to do in the, off of Main, that they're going to put that storefront to make it transparent and interesting to pedestrians, KLSU, and those types of things that are on Dead Center. So, while we want to make sure that we attract the opportunities for people to shop and spend money and generate sales tax, that's going to be interspersed with things that activate and make the street seem lively.
Jane, I think a great example is the city of Fort Worth, what they've done to their central business district. It is just lined with retail all within the core part of downtown Fort Worth, and it's a, it's a great street.
It is, and that, that, it's such an evolutionary thing, Councilman Greenwell, as you know, it took a long time for that critical mass of retail to develop along that way, that retail came and went and lost and, you know, tried different things, and, and so, it was putting together a plan and being able to administer the plan effectively by Sundance Corporation that really resulted in the longevity of the retail that's there now.
Correct. And, you know, the positive thing is, when most other cities outside of Oklahoma City and some others went through a very deep recession in 2008, 2009, Fort Worth was able to withstand that, just because of all the work they had done.
In advance of...
Yes, so, if we could ever get to that level, we'd be home free, and money would be rolling in.
And, and does this kind of follow the model of how Fort Worth did it? I mean, did they hire a consultant to come in and kind of...
Sundance Square is a consulting company, you know, the, the management company for downtown Fort Worth is, they have an organization similar to downtown OKC, but within the downtown, they also have something that's similar to a, like, a mall property management company that, that did that internally within, within Sundance. It's a little bit different.
Okay. Jane, thank you for answering those questions. Anything else on the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We're on to item eight, and these are items that require a separate vote. Item 8A1 has been deferred for two weeks, the new date there is February 25th. Item 8AB is a planning opportunity in Ward 8, the address is 8301 West Memorial Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new plan unit development. Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. The council probably recognized this project as one we talked about several weeks ago in terms of the retail, I mean, the residential area to the north of this. This plan went through the Planning Commission, was, excuse me, enhancement recommended for approval. Anybody sign up to talk about this one?
No.
Okay. We had, there were no protesters at the Planning Commission either. And Bob, they agreed to all the TE changes that were made. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8A3 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 9420 Southwest 15th Street. It's currently R1 single-family, will become a new, oh, and, double-A agriculture, and it would become a new plan unit development. Larry?
Is the applicant present? Okay. Do we have anybody signed up? And there were no protests at the Planning Commission either. I move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Getting ready to vote on item 8A3. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And item 8A4 is a zoning case in Ward 5 at 9900 South May Avenue. It's currently a plan unit development, and will become a new part if approved. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Francis, is anyone here to sign up? Okay. Mr. Box, would you mind coming up here with the renderings that you have? I would like to just point out a couple of items. This area was previously zoned as multifamily housing, and what this new request is, is to actually downsize or reduce the density, but still maintain the multifamily unit. And I think it's really going to be an enhancement to this part of Oklahoma City. You know, I'm a big fan of, of, well, undeveloped areas. There's a lot of trees and shrubs, and a couple of very nice, small lakes in the area. It'd be nice to retain them, but when you drive by them currently, you really can't see them. The area's been overgrown, not taken care of, and this is really going to enhance. So, could you just give us a little bit of a preview of the development?
Absolutely. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. As the councilman said, this is a, it's really unique that you have a developer come in that has some existing zoning that would allow somewhere around 700 units. And rather than find a way to fit their development into those 700 units and maximize that, they saw a unique opportunity with three large lakes, and they have a product that they do on a national scale that has been very successful, that they are so committed to, that they were willing to shed 400-plus units in density to make sure they have the product that they want. So, here's what they're going to be able to do. There's a series of buildings, but they're going to be able to utilize the lakes that are there and turn them into a nice amenity for their residents and a nice common space. The product that, that they're committed to are all two-story, and they use a different concept of building materials to break up the face. So, rather than your just traditional multifamily that's a flat face, you have a nice and interesting design to make it something that'll be a long-lasting benefit to the area, as councilman said. So, we tried to meet with the neighbors multiple times, and after we kind of explained to the neighbors what the zoning was that was already there, I think that they realized that this was probably a good opportunity for this developer to come in and decrease a lot of that density.
Correct. And I was at the neighborhood directly to the west of this area a week and a half ago, and there was no concern over the development. And they, too, are really looking forward to, in a sense, cleaning up the area compared to the current condition. And I believe also, the developers have indicated they will allow public access to that one lake closest to May Avenue, or am I incorrect on that?
I know, like, Eric Hahn with Continental is here, I'll let him know that.
Okay.
Hi, David.
Yes, hello.
So, a portion of that third lake to the west, that's still open for their use.
Great.
But, other than that, we have a gated community. I think the current property owner, he had told them at some point they could walk around the lakes, but our Springs Development is one where we, basically, for security, we have a gated access, so we'll fence our site. They'll still have access to that, that 1.3 acre lake furthest to the east.
Great, okay, well, thank you. If there's no other questions, I'd move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're about to vote on item 8A4. Any other comments or questions? All right, cast your votes, and it passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8B is a series of closing requests for alleys and streets... Item 8B is a series of closing requests and for alleys and streetways. Item 8B1 is in Ward Seven and it's near 13717 Plymouth Crossing. John, you okay with this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any protesters? I see the applicant is here. I move for approval.
All right. We're voting on item 8B1. It passed unanimously. And on 8B2 would close an alley in Ward Six at, on Agnew between Southwest 13th and Fourth.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to ask for the emergency.
Okay. We're voting for the emergency in item 8B1 and it passes 8-0.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm looking for a head nod from staff. I assume Councilman, Councilwoman Salyers is on board with the street closure in Ward Six?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion on item 8B2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8B3 has been stricken. Item 8C is a public hearing regarding the new building codes that were introduced to council at our last meeting. Is there anyone here hoping to speak today at the public hearing on item 8C? All right, looks like we're ready to move this one forward. Is there a motion?
I got a question about it.
Okay.
I think this is the right one. Have we gotten any feedback from the school districts within the, you know, within the city limits about how their feelings are about this or any feedback from the private schools about us mandating safe rooms for, for new, new buildings? I mean, I, I know I haven't gotten any feedback. I really, I feel like it would be a, I'd feel much more comfortable with this whole thing if, if the, if we had some school board support or, you know, I don't know. You know, the statement that the Building Code Commission made is that I, I agree a lot with their sentiment that it should, this is really the responsibility of the school board, not necessarily the responsibility of the city and the administrations of whoever is governing the private, private schools. So that's why I kind of feel like it needs to, I don't know. I think you.
Yeah, I talked to several school board presidents last summer and told them where we were headed with the direction. At that time, all of them agreed that safe rooms needed to be in new construction and it was kind of verbally their plan going forward. Whether or not they would prefer government oversight on that, I wouldn't necessarily know why. But what I don't want to see is a patchwork of, of schools where you have kids in, in some facilities that are safer than other kids. And that's what we got today. And, you know, this at least starts to address it, if not tomorrow, at least down the line, it'll, it'll start a kind of a, I think, a new strategy and a, and a new day. And, and just, it reflects, I think, on what is a, a higher expectation of safety for kids in schools that didn't exist when the schools were currently built.
And I think, I think the thing that kind of pulls up some red flags for me is that we're making a mandate of something that somebody else is going to have to pay for and that there could be some exception, because I, I think that, you know, a vast majority of people agree that new schools should have a safe room. I think that probably most new office complexes should have a safe room. I think, you know, I think that most people would agree with those statements, but it, it's just a matter of where that is mandated. And so that's, and I, and I, I think I'm, my main concern is from a lot of the private schools, especially some of the smaller private schools that might not have, might not have the, the funding or, you know, and I brought up some questions last time about what if somebody just adds on a new wing to their, or adds a new, you know, a big chunk of, of something to their school? Does it apply to that? Does it apply, you know, and so that's, those are my concerns. I mean, I think that, you know, within the Building Code Commission, they said that we agree that new buildings should have safe rooms, but the, really the responsibility for that is with the school board and I certainly can't disagree with that. So that's a, but those are my thoughts on it. And so I wanted to bring it up now instead of next time because we're going to be voting for it and just to try and get a little bit more input in positive or negative from, from the.
Well, and perhaps your comments will spur people to come to the next meeting and, and speak for or against it in, in support or, or not. Yeah, David?
Your Honor, and James, I, I agree with your concern about this body setting a mandate for public school, well, any school within the boundaries of Oklahoma City. But I think the safety of the children overrides that concern about us overstepping, you know, a certain level of, of control over building. And secondly, I think with respect to new construction, the additional cost is not all that significant to the total cost of the facility. And I can't give you dollar amounts, but I can give you an example, for instance, with respect to residential housing, you can have a safe room added, you know, where they come in and, and dig out the area in your driveway for as little as 2,500. If you have it built at the time of construction, it can drop as low as 1,500 or less. So there would be significant savings to include that. But perhaps we could even have, like Chief Sawyer out there, talk since she's responsible for the review of the safety programs in, in schools, the importance of something like this. And maybe today's not the proper time to bring forth some discussion from our fire department, but they certainly see it firsthand and they work with the schools to make sure everybody's trained to handle disasters appropriately. And this would just add to their ability.
Does, does the, does the new downtown elementary school have a safe room?
I just saw an email on that within the last two hours, Councilman Chidi. There, there is some discussion of, of the Board of Directors of that, funding that portion. So there were some emails between the Charter Board and the Architect on that this morning.
To try and put one in?
Yeah.
Okay. Last summer, we talked about maybe trying to study the history of weather events to deem if there was a particular geographic area of the city that was at higher risk than others.
Yes.
Did we do that?
Yes.
Okay. What was the results?
Surprisingly random and sporadic.
Yeah, well, it comes down to how far you want to make the timeline. If you make it 100 years, you see that there is no distinct pattern across the state of Oklahoma. But if you compress it to the last 15 or 20, there definitely is a, a compressed area in South Oklahoma City and Moore. So, you know, you can draw your own conclusions, but that's what the data would, would provide for you.
Okay. I have one comment. To look at safe rooms as a, as a unfunded mandate, you could look at the entire building code as an unfunded mandate. I mean, it has progressed over time to, based on safety. So, and we don't pay for that. We just say if you're going to build a building in Oklahoma City, you've got to have it wired a certain way. You have to use certain kinds of materials. This is really just an extension of that. This is, this is not like just going out and reaching out and saying you're going to have to do something totally different. And that, that's what the whole building code is about, is about safety, fire, storm safety. So it's just really an extension of the process that started many, many, many years ago.
But I mean, I think it is our responsibility though to make sure that, that we don't start mandating things that aren't needed or that aren't, that aren't within our realm of things that we should be mandating and not, and, and overstepping our bounds to, to mandate. So, but I completely agree with.
I guess I would agree that we ought to be vigilant about it, but I don't see this as that. Because we met for some time and looked at what the mayor talked about, about the patterns, about the cost of retrofitting, about the likelihood of an occurrence at any particular place. And the cost of doing that, which would have been, in my opinion, an overstepped, an overstepping of our, of our ability to mandate, we didn't include any of that in, in our recommendation. And so I think this is, it kind of fits what, what that study produced is that in the future, this is probably a good idea because it's cheaper to do it when you build as opposed to retrofitting. But, and I think we're just becoming more and more aware of what safety's all about. This code's amended, I don't know the chief back there, but, but I, but I, it's amended every year or two. It seems, seems like every few years, we're changing something in it and we're certainly making, making it more expensive to build usually. We're adding.
It may seem every year or two, but it's really every four or five years before we actually do code.
But I mean, it's frequent. It's not like it's been stagnant for 75 years. It's frequent changes. And most of the changes, at least all that I can recall, have to do with making them safer, making, using a different kind of insulation or kind of wood or not using certain things that we've discovered. So I just see it as part of the process. I do think we ought to be vigilant that we're not doing things that we, we ourselves complain about when we get, have mandates that, that the money doesn't come for. But I'm not sure this is in that area. I, I do appreciate your concern, James, about vigilance and I think that's, that's a point well taken.
Yeah.
You have a question? Do we have, is there an existing code that governs the design of safe rooms?
Yes.
So, and we require in, are these new ordinance, I mean, I didn't read it carefully enough, we require in new ordinance they comply with this code?
Yeah, there's female requirements on, on, on safe room construction.
And they have been adopted by the National Standards Board as governing or something?
Yes, there's, there's existing codes for residential or commercial, but if they put them in, they have to meet those codes.
And then the, will your inspectors be trained to ensure that's the case?
Well.
We get life threatening?
We do plan review and, and they'll have to certify, their architect or engineer would have to certify that they meet those standards.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we're voting on item 8C. We have a motion and a second on this?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And do we need to vote on one, two, and three separately?
No.
Okay.
It's just a public hearing.
All right. So now we're on to item 8D, which is a public hearing regarding the fire code. And we have some people that have signed up to speak. David Pardue?
Yes. Good morning. I'm a lawyer and I represent Dershowitz. And as you know, Dershowitz Recycling is located at 100 North Bath. What I want to do is restrict my comments to D1 and D2 and not D3, which is the scheduled fees. D1 is just the resolution and D2 is the ordinance. And what I propose to do is address the proposed amendments to the ordinances with the reasons why I think they should not be amended. In other words, we have the 2009 International Fire Code and the city proposes to make certain amendments to the 2009 code. Right now, we're under the 2003 code. The 2009 code has many benefits to it. The city wants to further amend the 2009 code. And these amendments to the 2009 code that we're here today for impact my client, Dershowitz Recycling at 100 North Bath. So before I address those, and there's just, there's just four or five comments that I want to make and ask for you to reconsider, but before I do that, let me just give you a, a very brief background about Dershowitz and its role in the community. And then I'm going to, I'm going to defer other comments to our neighbor, Standard Metals, who will, who's also signed up. So first of all, Dershowitz Property is owned Heavy Industrial District I3, which is intended to provide locations for those industrial uses that may generate relatively high levels of noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or light. These industrial uses are incompatible with residential uses. One of the problems that we have is, is that Oklahoma City residential areas are thankfully growing toward and becoming a more vibrant part of our community, but they're right next to this I3 industrial zone. For this reason, this is, I'm just quoting the ordinance, for this reason, it's desirable that they be located downwind as far away as possible from residential and most commercial uses. Dershowitz is currently regulated by OSHA, ODEQ, we've got an authorization number, the Environmental Protection Agency, which delegates its Air and Water Authority to ODEC, the City of Oklahoma City, which has given us a license, the City of Oklahoma City Storm Quality Permit, we have a license for that, and the Oklahoma Department of Agriculture, which also licenses and regulates what Dershowitz does. I want you to know that in the last seven years, Dershowitz, which is a metal recycling company, has invested 12 to 15 million dollars in hard assets in the Oklahoma City facility. Dershowitz currently grinds up guns and destroys confiscated weaponry for the following: alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, City of Moore Police Department, City of Oklahoma City Police Department, City of Edmond Police Department, City of Tulsa Police Department. Dershowitz does all this at no charge. The FBI Fugitive Task Force trains at the Dershowitz facility on an annual basis at no cost to the FBI. We purchase metals from a variety of sources and a large percentage of what we purchase has already been crushed. Some of the regulations that I'm going to address very briefly here, it creates this problem. We get a car from a salvage yard that's been crushed. We can't uncrush it. We can't go in there and find the mercury, although we do a real good job. We've never had a complaint with mercury, which is in here. Airbags, we can't go in and uncrush the car and find the airbag and remove those. A big percentage of our business comes from that. What we do require each of these salvage yards that sell us crushed cars is they have to certify that they have gone through that car and taken everything out of there that would be, otherwise be a violation, including what you all believe should be the amendments to the 2009 code. That's just a practical problem that we have. Now let me also point out to you that Dershowitz has an ongoing contract, this has to do with noise and I know that's going to come up soon. Dershowitz has an ongoing contract with Biotech Corporation, which is located on South I-35 in Oklahoma City. Biotech's job is to perform noise level monitoring at the Dershowitz facility to determine the ambient noise levels along the north side of the shredder. So you've got the shredder, we've got the north side of the shredder, we've got the railroad tracks, and then further on north than that, we've got the residences. The long-term noise assessment monitoring is performed to make sure that the noise levels fall within the predetermined maximums as defined by OSHA. Attached, and I, and I can send you all, each of you a copy of this memorandum because it's got exhibits to it, so, but I'm saying in here, attached is a copy of the November 11th, 2013 Biotech results, which indicates that the noise levels are below the, this is technical to me, 85 decibel action level outline in the Code of Federal Regulations, 29 CFR 1910. So my point is, is that we independently are doing everything we can to make sure that our noise levels fall within the OSHA regulations. And they do. We're okay with that, according to the Code of Federal Regulations and OSHA. We're not violating noise level requirements. We also built a 35-foot-high sound and sight buffer on the north side. If you drive by there, you can see a real large, huge, solid, I'll call it a fence, but it's a big bunch of containers that we've stacked on top of each other in this, that separate us even better from the residents. And also keep in mind that we have Delicia's our neighbor, we've got a big asphalt plant that's our neighbor. These guys do the same, these guys build asphalt, they, they create smoke. But anyway, it's not just that. Let me just finish by telling you this. When I first read this a couple of weeks ago, we submitted, our law firm submitted three separate open record requests two weeks ago to ODEC. And we got the documents February the 6th. The records revealed that the Dershowitz facility had two series of alleged complaints and one notice of violation issued by ODEC in the past five and a half years. The notice of violation, that's the one, was a result of a complaint activity The notice of violation, that's the one, was a result of a complaint activity occurring May 15, 2008, and May 30, 2008 alleging excess visible emissions. The notice of violation was issued by ODEC on July 28, 2008. In response to the notice, Dershowitz submitted a corrective action plan. After investigation, ODEC issued a closure letter finding that the compliance measures implemented appeared to be successful. Next, the City of Oklahoma City Action Center forwarded constituents' complaints to ODEC on December 30, 2011, that's three, two and a half years ago, January 5, 2011, and October 28, 2011. Those are the three Oklahoma City Action Center complaints that were forwarded, that they got, this is the ones that they know about, the ones that the city knows about, all were in 2011. The series of complaints alleged that the facility was not removing fluids before crushing, causing explosions, and not operating in accordance with ODEC regulations. ODEC investigated this series of complaints on January 3, 2011, and October 31, 2011. ODEC found no ODEC violations, and complaint closure letters were issued accordingly. Now, here's the sections that I'm asking the city council to take another look at. So, what we have is the 2009...
David, how long, it's longer, are you going to go?
I've got, I'll make it a minute.
Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, what we're talking about is 105.6, .45, .1, and it's in the actual, that's the ordinance. Here's what you want to do, you want to remove airbags, and like I was saying, airbag removal will not contribute to public safety, and I already told you about some of the other problems I have. Under subparagraph 5 of this subsection, you have us making two requirements. One, you make a report to the fire department, and the other is to a fire code official. I ask you to just make us have one report. If there's an occurrence, don't tell us to make two reports, one to the fire department, one to the fire code. Simplify it for us, and also tell us how you want it to be done. That's a real simple thing. And I said specify the reporting method. You want us to call, you want us to write, you want us to fax you something? Tell us what it is that the reporting method is. This next one is contentious, delete hours of operations. The 2009 code has nothing in it about regulating hours of operation. We researched this very briefly and found that Mission Hills, or Shawnee Mission Hills outside of Kansas City, Austin, and San Antonio do have an hours of operation amendment, but theirs has to do with the fact that they're wanting to regulate detonations, explosions, like dynamite, things like that. And the other one had to do with regulating fireworks, so you can't shoot off fireworks at these real odd hours. The only other one I really want to address is there's an appeals procedure in the 2009 code, okay? The appeals procedure says that the fire code official will act, they set up a board, an appellate board. So, the fire code official that is going to go in and cite us for violation of an ordinance will sit as an ex officio member of the appellate board. That's the 2009 code. And what you all want to do is, is you want to get rid of that, and you want to have no person other than the enforcer sitting as the appellate representative. That's a huge difference between what the International Fire Code says that we should have, which is an appellate board in which the enforcer sits as an ex officio member, and what you've suggested is that you get rid of the appellate board and have that enforcer, prosecutor, decider, he's going to decide his own decision. We think that you should delete that and go back to having the same appellate review process at the 2009 International Code.
David, thanks very much. Good morning. Stacy, if you could give us your name and address?
Good morning, I'm Stacy Minchin, I'm with Standard Iron and Metal Company, we're at 1501 East Reno. We're approaching our 71st year in business, over 60 of which have been in the same locations, owned I-3 heavy industrial, not including the two shredders, which were just approved by city council for two new companies coming into Oklahoma City, one on Southeast 59th, next door residential neighborhood, and one in an I-2 area off I-40 and Morgan Road. There are currently only two other shredders in the city, ours and the one next door at Dershowitz. Both companies provide a tremendous service to the community, including municipalities and governmental agencies seeking and using our services on a daily basis. To add what Mr. Pardue said, I'd like to add a few things, including some statistics on our industry and the contribution made to the environment and the economy. The scrap industry employs 460,000 adults in the United States, it pays 5.8 billion in wages, provides 30.7 billion in economic benefits, 2.1 billion in federal tax revenue, 1.5 billion in state and local taxes. In 2012, the US scrap industry recycled more than 55 million metric tons of ferrous scrap, enough to build 25 Eiffel Towers on a daily basis. We're the largest exporter of ferrous scrap in the world. By using ferrous scrap rather than virgin material, CO2 emissions are reduced by 58%. 2011 recycling rates for cars, 95%, appliances, 90%, steel cans, 71%, structural steel, 98%, reinforcement steel, 70%. With this information in mind, we'd like to request that prior to passing a new ordinance, that you allow us to work collaboratively with you on an ordinance that works for both parties, just as we did in 2008 on the metal theft law. We worked directly with Chief Bill Citi, his law enforcement officials, the city attorney's office, legislators, and the utilities to create a metal theft law that involved, that all involved believed would produce the most effective results, and just as we did again in 2013, to make slight adjustments to the law and to include the ag department for oversight. We were able to accomplish this because of the willingness of the parties involved to learn about our processes and our industry, and we would like to respectfully request that you allow us the same opportunity to educate you on our processes, procedures, and realistic expectations. When I received a call this past October from Rita Tally in the city attorney's office, we discussed our materials intake and procedures, and I suggested at that time that those involved should be encouraged to drive our I-3 area where our businesses have been for decades, as well as to drive the newly developed residential neighborhood, which has been recently reestablished just to the north of us. There are a number of structures and businesses located between our companies and the residential neighborhood, including large piles of dirt and sand, as well as five railroad tracks. There's an additional track which runs directly through the neighborhood, creating tremendous noise and vibrations. In terms of reports of the booms from our shredders, as they've been referred to, we have five structures on our 18-acre facility, some of which are original and some of which were built in later years. To the best of our knowledge, none have ever sustained any damage as a result of these noises or vibrations. I have driven the area a number of times, did so again yesterday, both shredders were in full operation. The noise from the equipment was barely audible in the residential neighborhood, there was no soot or goop, as the terms have been used, being emitted from either machine, or as previously reported by others. And based on the information presented by Mr. Pardue, the statistics presented, the fact that we are an I-3 area, have been there for many decades, we'd like for you to consider tabling the proposed ordinance in favor of collaborative effort. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Stacy. Daniela Davis?
Good morning, I am here representing the John F. Kennedy Neighborhood Association. We are just north, we are just north of the center, the recycling center, and the bottom line for us, for the 400 residents of the Neighborhood Association, is that it is affecting our quality of life. It's not only the noise, but homes have been damaged, there's smoke, we don't know what long-term effects that might have on our health, but we are, believe that, we certainly don't want to put anybody out of business, we don't really cause any problems, we just want the same quality of life that everybody in Oklahoma City has. We believe that we deserve that. And so, I'm here representing our neighborhood, saying that we believe that this is a good first step. Certainly, we don't know what may happen in the future, but we believe that something has to be done to improve the quality of life. We should not be subjected to our homes being damaged, you know, smoke, and things of that nature. Our quality of life has to improve, and we believe that this has a certain impact on that. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Will Bandella?
Good morning, Mayor, City Council.
What is your name and address?
My name is Will Bandella, I'm a resident of the JFK Neighborhood, JFK Neighborhood, Councilman Pettis, our councilman. I am concerned, of course, that there are too many explosions on a daily or on a regular basis, and again, affecting our quality of life. But actually, what I'm concerned is the technical aspects of what you all present in the recommendations of the proposal for ordinance, and I noticed that you didn't really publish any of the local amendments, and I don't know what they are in the International Fire Code that you're going to adopt, but if it does not include anything to prevent these explosions from occurring by the industrial operations that are adjacent to neighborhoods such as ours, affecting the quality of life, then it's not really effective, in my opinion, as a resident of JFK. We need that type of thing to say, okay, control the explosions, the noise, now, I understand OSHA and EPA, they're concerned with the health, and these are continuous noise levels. Now, we get acute noise levels, which does not affect the health per se, but it does affect quality of life, damages maybe the property, and also affect property values. Therefore, what we need is amendments to that local, to the local ordinance, saying, provided for prevention, okay, of these explosions. So, I've got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming down. Comments from council?
Well, I just, I appreciate that representatives are here, especially the attorney. I guess I'm not hearing particular solutions, and I hear minimizing of the occurrences. I want you to know, you know, that I experienced myself firsthand an explosion a few months ago. I didn't file any report, and so I think that it's not, I think you doing an open records request and seeing how many reports, I think all you have to do is walk through JFK and talk to the residents there, and you get all the reports you need. But I walked, I was at Fairview Baptist Church, which is quite a distance, walking with a gentleman who's a five-time combat vet, who absolutely felt he was back in Iraq with a military-grade explosion from your client's facility. And we drove over there, well, first, we were exposed to a fog-like debris, and we're pretty far from the facility, so it's coming through and we're breathing it. And I had pulmonary reactivity for a good 24 hours. I'm a physician, and I know when there's particulate debris that is harmful, and I felt it for 24 hours, your client induced that kind of pulmonary pain. And that is just, that's not acceptable, to have military-grade explosions, to have that kind of particulate debris going through neighborhoods. And we're, again, we're fairly far from the facility. And then we drove over to your facility, and we looked over the fence, and we see everything's shut down, and we were just looking, there's no, whatever just happened to be on the belt at that time is what got spread through the neighborhood. And if cars are already being smashed, and the gas tank is in there, or the airbags are mercury, then I would just say that you can't do it anymore. Send it to another facility elsewhere in the city. I mean, that's not, the fact that that's an obstacle doesn't make it okay to send that kind of particulate debris through neighborhoods and hurt people. I mean, I just, there's no objective third party, and there's definitely no objective healthcare professional who would witness that and think that that's okay, that that's okay to subject citizens of Oklahoma City to. There would be no objective third party that would think, oh, this is okay, this, well, it's already being smashed, and so it's just, it's difficult, and so we should just let this continue. I don't think you could find one healthcare professional that would think that that's okay. And so, what I heard today was minimizing, deflection, and no solutions, no solutions for alternatives or other things that we could take, ways to protect the citizens of Oklahoma City, and I think we should move forward, and I frankly don't think that it's stringent enough. I'd like to hear, I'm just glad you're here, because I know I've asked Councilman Pettis, and he's said that he couldn't get a response from your client, and so I'm just glad you're here today. And I'd like the conversation to continue, and maybe to hear some solutions about how you can stop what are military-grade explosions in the middle of a neighborhood with very harmful, has to be carcinogenic, has to be carcinogenic particulate debris going through the neighborhood. Thanks.
John, do you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for coming out this morning. I've been to both facilities several times, and each time I've gone to the facilities, you all's operations manager, oh, he's out of town, oh, he's out of town, oh, he's out of town. I'm glad we finally got your attention with this proposed change. I move that we move the item forward.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council?
Question, Mayor?
We have a motion on the table. Yeah, Larry?
The words collaborative effort were mentioned. Was it a collaborative effort with the people that are doing the work? Did they sit down during the drafting of what we were going to do, or were they invited to?
Not, I don't believe so, but I'll let the fire marshal speak to that. Not the particular drafting of this, there had been ongoing talks for a long period of time.
That is correct. We responded to some complaints over the last few years, and like in 2008, the inspector visited with personnel from these operations and just found out what the procedures were. Based on that research and some internet research and what have you, we developed these requirements to add to addition to the already required permit of the fire code.
Okay. David?
Your Honor, yes. While I'm concerned about the living conditions for the residents of these neighborhoods, which I think is very important, I think some of the requests seem just as fair to me, that if I can list the ones that I took notes about, specifying the reporting method, I think that's a fair request to say we need it to be in writing, we need it to be in email, or whatever the specified reporting that we would prefer. To have one report seems fair. And then the appeals procedures, I'm going to speak about this from personal experience, not with this particular body, but in, as it relates to income tax appeals, especially at the state level. You go into those appeals hearing, and it's a stacked deck against you. I'm not saying this is the way it's going to be on this situation, but to have an impartial board hear these hearings does seem to be a fair request. So, what I would like to see is if staff could provide a response to the issues that were brought out today on both sides.
All right. Well, this is an interesting issue because... Well, it, this is an interesting issue, because I think everyone here wants the same thing. I, I don't think that the neighbors that are being impacted are trying to shut down a business or trying to, you know, put people out of work, and I don't think the people that are conducting the business are hoping to impact the neighbors. And if it were being resolved naturally, we wouldn't be here. But I think Councilman Pettis made some, some good faith efforts to try and see if, if we could get to the meat of the problem, and, and, you know, our perception is that he was ignored. And so, you know, here we are. Chief?
I just wanted to clear that one issue up, Councilman. The, the reporting issue itself, that is one report. So when you contact the fire department as it relates to this ordinance, there's no dual reporting, as, as has been mentioned. I, I realize what the language of the ordinance says, but once the fire department's contacted, the fire department and the fire authority, they're one and the same, so there would be one report there.
Chief, can you speak to the appeal process that Councilman Greenwell brought up?
Again, yeah, that, that's virtually unchanged from what it's been for many, many years now.
Well, and I hope no one from the Oklahoma Tax Commission took offense by my comments, because I know I'll be out there at some point, but it just seems when the enforcer is the appeals situation without other parties at least participating, you do feel like it's somewhat unfair. But again, I don't know, I'm just asking, could the staff respond?
With some personnel changes that we've made here in, in past year or two, the member of our department is a civilian employee that sits on that board now, so he is not CLEAT certified. He would not be the one issuing a citation or enforcing the code. He has no authority in that way. He's a civilian employee within our Fire Prevention Services Division now that, that sits on that board.
Could I ask this? Would it be appropriate to have a citizen serve on that board to get the perspective of a citizen's on the appeals hearing? And I don't need an answer now, I'm just raising the question. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to ask it in that manner, but I'm just throwing that out there, that perhaps if we had citizens' participation in this, in addition to the fire department, maybe we'd get a different perspective. I'm not sure, but I'm just posing that as a potential.
I believe it'd be appropriate if you deemed it appropriate, the council.
All right. This is a public hearing today, and this will, if passed, it'll move on, and when's the next stage?
We need to clarify that, because it was posted, it was originally advertised to be heard next week on the 18th, but because of the weather, we canceled our financial workshop, and that has now been rescheduled for the 18th. So it's our anticipation that we will defer this item on the 18th to the 25th, and so the final adoption on this, we'll defer it next week, and I discuss it at all next week at our financial workshop, and have full discussion on the 25th, two weeks from today.
Okay.
Can we use that time for some collaboration, getting some of the input from the industry that's involved, the neighbors that we did not apparently get, that went forward?
Sure.
I mean, I think it would be helpful, maybe, if we, there, there seems to be a lack of communication between the two groups, and I think Councilmen, should each point's well taken, there may be some definite health measures that we have to consider, but I think we need to do that in a measured form, not just one person going out there and reading the thing, complaining about it. See if it's a consistent problem, and if it is, there may be a solution to it.
Yeah, I mean, it is a definitely consistent problem. They've been having these problems for years, for, when I say years, years. So this is not anything new to those companies. And, and I'm just glad, again, that they decided to show up.
Perhaps their showing up indicates maybe a willingness to collaborate at this point.
Well, I, I hope, I hope, I hope they are willing to collaborate, but if their collaboration means weakening the proposed amendment, I mean, that, to me, you got to have something strong. You have to have something to hold them accountable, because right now, they're not being held accountable.
I think, I have no, no argument with that at all. I think it's a great idea, but I think there may be some middle ground that we can come through some conclusions on that may be helpful as we go forward before we get to 25th. That's on my, thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Okay. We're, this, today was a public hearing, we'll be bringing this back for a presumed vote on the 25th. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8E is an item that's being introduced today, and we're setting a public hearing for February 25th, and Assistant City Manager MT Berry is here to tell us more about what would be a, a new noise ordinance regulation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. MT Berry, City Manager's Office. Staff is requesting some amendments to the current noise ordinance. That ordinance is found under Chapter 34 of the Municipal Code. What we've put before you today, under, under Section 34-5, Number 5, we're asking that a word be deleted from that. It, it currently reads "non-commercial, unamplified public speaking and public assembly activities conducted on any public space or public right-of-way." We're asking that the word "unamplified" be removed and would read "non-commercial public speaking and public assembly activities conducted on any public space or public right-of-way." That's the first change that staff is requesting. Then, under Section 34.7, which are the permit requirements, we are asking that a change be made. Currently, a noise permit can only be issued three times a year for a single location. And we're asking that, that, and that would apply to both residential business and entertainment districts. We are asking that that regulation only apply to residentially zoned areas, and that business and entertainment areas not have a limit on the number of noise permits that they can receive. And those would be the two amendments that we would like to make to the, to the current noise ordinance.
Okay.
Question, on the, the commercial exemption you're talking about, Chief Berry, could we maybe think about including a, some kind of limitation if we get X number of complaints because of that facility, that we, we re-estate this?
We do have other provisions within the ordinance that would allow us to address complaints from other businesses or any, any other neighbors that might be to it, and I believe that we have adequate controls currently in the ordinance that we can address that if we should have a problem with.
And those controls would allow us to eliminate that nuisance to the residential areas closer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Ready to go on this? How about a motion then to move Item 8E forward? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And again, this item has been introduced today, and a public hearing has been set up for February 25th. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And Item 8G is a public hearing regarding a specific structure that's in a historic preservation district, and it's in Ward 2. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this issue today? Ed, you want to move this one forward? All right. Cast your votes on Item 8G, and it passed unanimously. Do we need to vote on 1 and 2, or just the 1? Okay. We're moving on to Item 8H then, and this is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8H? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. Item 8I, understand we do not need executive session? All right. Motion to strike, and it's been, well, we need to approve the resolution, not a motion to strike. All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8J, understand we do not need executive session?
We need to approve the resolution.
But we need to approve the resolution, so we need a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do need executive session. How about a motion to move that one to executive session? Cast your votes. That item moves to executive session. Item 8L, this claim's recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8L? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9, this claim's recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under either of the items listed under Item 9? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council, and Councilman Ryan, you have a resolution today.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. It's, this is a resolution we discussed, I think, at the meeting before last or last meeting, and this puts into a formal resolution some of the things we talked about, and it would require an estimated amount, and the reasons for the trip we made, benefits might be approved to the city for that purpose. Anyway, it's, it's a fairly straightforward thing. I don't think it's very complicated, doesn't require a lot of additional burden on the part of the traveler, and I think it gives a traveler an opportunity to look at his request and make sure that he, in his own mind, is confident the fact that it will be the benefit of the city and the expenses it provides. I would move approval.
Can I ask you a question? So this, this does do what, what you talked about before, that it would outline the costs?
Estimated costs, and of course, it's only estimate, so we, nobody's, we won't be, there's no attempt, at least in my mind, to hold people to the estimate, it's just a guess as what it might cost to go. There was some idea what kind of approval we're asking for, that.
One, I guess one question, and maybe it can be addressed in something more, more comprehensive, just on disclosure, is what, what happens if we go on city business and we're not seeking reimbursement? We can receive?
Then there's no requirement.
And, and that's, that's, that's what I'm asking, is, is, does this go far enough?
Only, only the city's required to reimburse the individuals' purpose.
But, but any, any corporation or any entity, any person could send us on a trip, it could be city-related business, they could pay for the, the trip, is that correct? A corporation could send me to go see a conference in Las Vegas, and there, there would be no, that's legal?
I think as long as you didn't represent yourself as being a representative of the city, then I think would be okay.
But what if I did? What if I did?
And I think then there would be some approval essentially that way, but the city council wanted you to go to this particular conference and represent the city.
But if, if I wasn't seeking reimbursement, if, if an out, if a third party paid for it, but I was going as a city official?
As, as going as a city official, I think if you're representing yourself on official business, then there has to be some level of reason, the whole council approved you were going this trip regardless of who paid for it.
Right, and I'm, okay, so that, but that wouldn't be included in?
Would not be included in this resolution.
So I'm wondering if that, if that needs to be, that if a third party pays for it, that that would be included? And, and, you know, this, this goes to difficulty I have just in trying to, to trace back what kind of travel has transpired. I know, you know, we've talked about this before, the mayor's schedule for an eight-year period of time has been deleted from the city computers, both the digital and the paper trail, so it's impossible to know what city business.
That's, that's a campaign issue.
No, it really isn't. It goes, it, it goes to travel under your city area where we're going as city representatives.
My resolution was intended to have, and has, if it is adopted, would be on city-paid-for trips. Now, if you want to introduce a resolution to extend it, that's your prerogative, but I would not at this point in time modify the resolution.
And how, so you would modify the resolution?
I would not modify the resolution.
But if you wanted to incorporate that, it would be to disco, to have, right, the reason for the trip regardless of who's, who's paying for it?
Well, I, I think, not necessarily, yeah, the reason of the trip, to the extent that it would demonstrate that the city was holding or making you responsible and as a, official representative of the city at this particular conference or whatever kind of meeting. I think you go to a conference when you paid for it yourself or had somebody else pay for it, and represents yourself without any approval from the city council, what express views that don't necessarily represent the feeling of the majority of the council, then I think that it needs some kind of a, a limitation on that. But that's not what this resolution intended.
Okay, well, I, I believe that has occurred in the past.
That's up to you. I, if, if you want to present a resolution to extend this resolution, to include those sort of things, that's fine, it's your prerogative. This one does not do that, and I don't have any intention of modifying it, put that at this point in time.
Okay, well, I, I think, I'm, I'm not prepared to just do something off the cuff, and maybe I'd like to talk with Kenny over the next couple of weeks, but I think in terms of disclosure, of, of things that are being paid for by, by third parties, there needs to be, there needs to be something addressed. It's, it's, I'll, I'll work with Kenny over the next couple of weeks.
Fine. I still move the resolution. Have motion made in a second.
We have a motion in a second on Item 10A. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Items from council. Pat, do you have anything for us today? All right, John? David?
Just that I'm looking towards warmer weather that they tell us we're going to have, and that's about it.
All right.
We'll get you something by the end of the week. Oh, what, I do, speaking of weather, you know, January was one of the driest months in our, I think, both state and certainly cities' history. I think it was, came in at number six or something. You know, last year, we had plenty of rain in central Oklahoma, but I still don't want to not think in terms of looking at ways that we can enhance the chances of rain, whether it's seeding or something like that, and if we can work in conjunction with, I'm sorry, I don't know the county that Lake Canton is located in, but, you know, Eric?
Blaine.
Blaine, thank you. Work with other agencies, whether it's the county up there or Oklahoma County, to look at ways to enhance the chances of rainfall, because we just don't know if we'll be back in that drought situation.
At one point in time, the Water Resources Board had a special committee appointed on weather modification, and it was a disaster, because wherever it rained, the people didn't want rain, so we, we, the committee covered an awful lot of, of abuse because they caused rainfall in Hughes County, the peanut crop, I recall that one particularly. I served on that committee. Anyway, it, it was a interest to the Water Resources Board. It did not prove very successful seeding files.
All right. Pete?
I'm going to bring back the, a resolution, not the same one that was on the, on the council before, in a couple of weeks with regard to the eastern fire line, and I'll circulate it again to see if anybody would like to join the resolution. I think the, for what it was, the first attempt was very successful. It may not be what some think it ought to be or could be, but I think for the first attempt, it was pretty successful. The city of Tulsa has unanimously, the county, I mean, the council has voted unanimously to endorse a resolution supporting the status quo as opposed to selling the line, and my resolution is probably going to mirror very closely the Tulsa resolution. I've also been contacted by a number of people that are, that are interested, BNSF for one, the, the Waco people for another, that were, they're, they're two of the bidders, and there's, I talked to the manager this morning, and it, there is some concern about whether or not the appropriateness of having them testify or come before us and make a presentation with regard to their positions. But I do think it's a vital import to Oklahoma City to make a good decision, or that ODOT make a good decision with regard to the sale, and so I'd like to work on a way that we can at least listen to the, to the various proponents, and they have very different views as to who, who ought to get it and how it could be operated, and why it ought to be done, and all, it'd just be nice to get it all kind of, get them all in one place and have that opportunity, but, but the resolution itself will be back on the council agenda in two weeks to, to support the idea that the rail line not be sold.
All right. Larry?
Just like to encourage all the neighbors in Windsor Hills to get out Saturday morning and attend their neighborhood meeting at the theater in Windsor Hills Shopping Center at 10:00 AM. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ed? Couple of things. I'd like to invite citizens to a town hall meeting this Thursday night on public safety, and this is the five-year anniversary of a study that we did as a city by a company called Berkshire that looked at specifically police manpower levels, and it made a lot of recommendations. It talked about that we were, that we were very, very low in terms of the number of police officers trying to, to service 620 square miles. It gave some warnings about what would happen to morale, what was, what was deficient in terms of investigations. It was a very comprehensive report, and that was in February of 2009, so we're right at five years. Today, we have about 40 less officers on the street than at, at the time of that study. And the lead investigator's name was Michael Walker, and Mr. Walker is coming to Oklahoma City, and he'll speak this Thursday night at the Francis Tuttle, the Reno campus, not the one on 122nd, but the one on Reno, Rockwell and Reno. the one on 122nd, but the one on Reno, Rockwell and Reno. It's very close to where on Friday we had the home invasion with the three citizens shot. It's very close to the area of the city with the highest crime rate, the four-square-mile area from Council to Meridian, roughly 10th to 27th, where we just got a federal grant to try and suppress the crime in that area. And Mr. Walker will talk about kind of plugging in the numbers that Chief City gave us a couple of months ago, giving us an update about what our present requirements are, about 200 officers short. But we'll talk about kind of that study, review that study from five years ago, and kind of plugging in what's happened over the last five years, and hearing his thoughts about what's happened in other cities, what we face in terms of crime, both violent and property crime with those amount of police manpower levels, and potential solutions, based on what's worked and hasn't worked in other cities. And so I think it'll be very, I think it'll be a great conversation. Again, that's at 6:30 p.m. at the Francis Tuttle, the Reno campus on Reno and Rockwell at 6:30 p.m. this Thursday night. Thank you.
James?
Yeah, I was at a meeting last night at the Britton Courtyard Apartments, and I just want to thank Master Sergeant Scala and the residents of that apartment complex for getting those residents together. They've kind of formed their own little neighborhood association. They elected a president last night, and it was just good. Their apartment complex is one that is, that struggles with crime, most of the crime occurs from people who don't live there. And so it's, this was kind of their first step of joining together and saying enough is enough, and kind of taking back their neighborhood. It was the first apartment complex neighborhood association that I'd ever attended, and I don't know how many of those are around, but I highly encourage that to happen, because, you know, if you get sick of crime in your neighborhood, that's the best way of doing it, is to get the neighbors organized. And it's a lot of hard work, but I just wanted to thank, I think, Master Sergeant Scala of the Hefner Division was pretty instrumental in getting that meeting going, and they have a good security team there that has been on for just a few months, so hopefully they can continue the progress. That's all I have.
All right. City manager reports.
We have a couple of presentations this morning. The first one's by Jane Jenkins of DOKC, updated us on some downtown activities.
Good morning, members of the council. Both the Board of Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated and the Advisory Board for the Business Improvement District held their annual meetings in January. So we prepared this presentation kind of as an annual report for them, and I wanted to share it with you. It's also available on the DOKC website, and I'm sure that you have copies of it there. Do I have a clicker, or do? Sometimes it works. First of all, we've had a lot of development happen in the downtown area in 2013. The announcement of GE on 10th Street with 130 employees, 95,000 square feet, that will open in the spring of 2015, is really a game changer for Oklahoma City all the way around. I think that we're going to see this change not only the downtown, but the community in general. We're also excited about the announcement of the OG&E headquarters on the site of Stage Center. Obviously, for many of us, that's a bittersweet thing, but it's also, that particular piece of land is certainly valuable and appropriate for this type of development, so we're excited about that. We've had several office renovations that are, have been announced. The Rock Island Plow Building, one of the oldest buildings in Bricktown, will be office for lease and is due to be completed in 2015. This is a building that has been, I'm not, you know, just sort of one of those empty, I don't want to say eyesores, but places in Bricktown where you go, well, we're not quite done yet. Well, I think this will go a long way toward really filling some of those gaps. I mentioned the Oklahoman at the Century Center with 350 employees, due to arrive in September of 2014. And of course, the Journal Record Building, that will also be constructing a 409-space parking garage, which we desperately need downtown. We have, we've had some hotels announced that they're coming. The biggest announcement, of course, is the 21C Museum Hotel that will be in West Downtown. This is a big deal for, to anchor kind of that new emerging area, that frontier of downtown right now. The Ambassador, which will be in Midtown at the corner of 11th and Walker, it's the old Osler Building, a former medical office facility, be $15 million in a 55-room boutique hotel, and the only hotel serving that area. On the other side of the medical corridor, we will be welcoming an embassy suites that will have 194 rooms to serve the Health Science Center. Mosaic is a residential project that is being developed by the same folks who brought us Level. It is right across the street from Level on Oklahoma. The Maywood Apartments are 139 rental units. They look like they're almost completed, and then they have another 160 additional units planned. We're also excited about the Maywood Flats, that will mark a return to for sale properties in downtown. And rather than building vertically like some of the townhomes have done, this will offer an alternative in terms of living space that will be on all one level. Other residential projects, the Metropolitan will be the biggest one in downtown along Oklahoma Avenue north of 6th Street, have 330 rental units. The Steel Yard will open in mid-2015 in Bricktown, 250 rental units, and then 376 rental units total in Phase Two. Other residential projects, 10th and Chertel, Lisbon Lofts, and 1201 North Francis, these are all in the Midtown-St. Anthony area, so that area continues to grow as a mixed-use district for residential, office, retail, and restaurant. We're really proud about the downtown elementary school that is scheduled to open this fall. John Rex will bring a great element to our downtown nationwide. When we look at downtowns across the country that are successful is because they have brought this element into their downtown. I'm often asked, well, what about the continuing education? Well, you know, those kids are going to start at first and second grade, and hopefully, as we work through there, we're going to look at ways that we can offer secondary education, and such as that working with the school district. But this is a model that will be watched all over the country. And then, of course, the Old Central High School will return to its original use as an education facility with the OCU Law School moving there. Again, a great game changer for downtown, bringing over 550 students and 100 faculty, staff, and administrators to the heart of the Park Plaza District in Midtown. Other retail construction we talked about, I think this has got a different name now, I'm still calling it House of Bedlam, that is along Mickey Mantle and the Bricktown Canal. And again, it's not just retail, it's going to have some rock climbing and an entertainment component, because retail is changing, and you see that also with Fassler Hall and the Dust Bowl, that it will be more like a German beer hall and a bowling alley. So it's not just food and beverage, or just buying product, there's an entertainment-active component involved. And then, of course, Katie's Southern Kitchen opened in December of last year in Bricktown. This is just a list, I won't go over all of them, of the new restaurants and bars that opened in downtown in 2013, and some new retail that we had open in 2013 in downtown. Other new or relocated businesses that are all of different kinds, office or service-type businesses that came in, or relocated from another place in Oklahoma City, or were new businesses opening in downtown in 2013. Want to talk a little bit about our residential performance. As you can see, we really are doing quite well in the marketplace in terms of where our occupancy is, and then also what our price per square foot is. Efficiency, we are about, you know, the same all the way around that are in the metro. But when it comes to those larger units, we really are demanding a higher, you know, rental rate than Oklahoma City and the metro, you know, in general. And so that really marks a great, you know, real estate metric for downtown. Also, with our hotel performance is also great. Our occupancy downtown is 71 percent, that compares favorably to the rest of the city. Our average daily rate is higher than the rest of the city, and the rate change is year over year. And then the room supply is actually showing that we do need additional hotel rooms, because it's negative. That's the amount of available hotel rooms on any given, on any given day. And so in downtown in particular, and in OKC in general, we do have room for more hotels. Talking a little bit about our events, because this is what we do. We had Restaurant Week, we had Employee Appreciation Day, Board Member Appreciation. This is all just going through the calendar in 2013. Starlight Supper was a new event for 2013. We will be repeating that on April the 10th this year in Bicentennial Park. This year, the recipient, we donated the proceeds from Starlight Supper last year to Emerson School. This year, it will be to Untitled Art Gallery. We're going to have a sound bikes concert. I'm really excited about the Downtown Dash this year, because it's going to be in August, and it's going to be part of a three downtown race series type thing that you're going to be, and I'm sorry to remember the name of the two other races, but there's going to be one every Saturday night in August, and you're going to be able to, one is the Midnight Streak, I can remember that. Register for all three at the same place, we're combining all of this, and there will be prizes for people who do all three races. But I love the name of the race series, we're calling it We Run This Town. So I think it'll be, I think it'll be a lot of fun in August for the runners. Rock the Boat is a promotion in Bricktown to activate the canal. We give away ice cream to the employees downtown in September. This was really fun this year, because we worked with Fleet Tracking to have, you know, GPS, and we worked with the Mercedes-Benz dealership to deliver the ice cream to the employees in smart cars. So people could find us on their computer and come out and get their ice cream. We also had a developer's luncheon, and for those of you who are interested, we're going to have another one, I believe it's next Thursday, if that's the 20th of February. And it'll be at the Skirvin Hotel. You should have received an invitation, if you didn't, let me know, and I'll get you one. We had October Bike Tours, this is using Spokys, as well as people's own bikes, these were very popular. And while they were free, we're limited with the amount of people that we can have on them, and every one of them, quote unquote, "sold out." You know, we had the maximum number of people that we could have on each particular tour. We produced Six Degrees of Bacon, which is a bacon pork-themed event that raises money for the Midtown group. And then, of course, we had an extremely successful downtown in December, presented by Devon, event this year, and you can see all the many activities that are involved in celebrating the holidays in downtown Oklahoma City. Our communications really grew, we're very proud of our, the growth in our Twitter, Facebook, newsletter subscribers. I have folks all the time that are coming to me and telling me that they use the downtown newsletter as a way to really get information about what's happening downtown, as well as to set their social calendars for the weekend. We manage the Automobile Alley Twitter, Film Row Twitter, Film Row Facebook, these are all things that we do for those other districts downtown, as well as downtown OKC in general. We do have Bricktown Facebook and Bricktown Twitter that we manage through DOKC, but that's actually done through Mallory, who is the Bricktown District Manager. Some special projects that we had this year was the Silo Art Project, the Rick Stennett Project, that will be painting the mural on the silo near the river. The Bricktown Main Street District Gateway Side, we added one over Main Street, and then, of course, the Spokys Bike Share Program that we work with the city on. Our staff is very involved within the community, it's not just about downtown, and this is just a list of some of the organizations that we are representing Oklahoma City and downtown with Retro Metro, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Leadership Oklahoma City, and Leadership Oklahoma. So downtown is really being well represented by our staff out in the community with their volunteer efforts. With marketing and branding, we added new bubbles around downtown, we had billboards and had the development of several new event logos that we are working on. This bubble campaign, you've probably seen it, is really popular, and we always have businesses that are calling us, wanting us to come, put a bubble on their window. And we refresh this like every year to 18 months, kind of change up the colors a little bit, do a little bit of a different type of things with the slogan. But I think it will be a messaging platform for us for many years to come, and allow us to sort of use the conversation angle also. Advocacy, you know, we worked with the city on the special events permitting issues that you recently considered, the Automobile Alley Parking Plan, the Quiet Zone Fundraising, Bricktown Parking Issues, and Boulevard Planning. These are just a few of the high-profile issues that we advocate for downtown businesses and property owners, or try to have a voice in the discussion. With operations and clean and safe, we do street vacuuming and pedestrian cans, we do canal maintenance, underground tunnel maintenance, I have some great, I want you to look at this picture right now, this is the new downtown Oklahoma City lap pool. It was actually the underground during the flooding that we had, and again, I thank the city, it was a great partnership in getting this thing cleaned up just as quickly as we could, and being able to replace what we could in terms of carpet that we needed, and the city was a great partner on that. We also took on an increased role in Project 180 maintenance as we moved to do that. Eventually, the Business Improvement District will be doing all, most of the Project 180 maintenance, but we're starting to do that now, so that we just recently replaced 10 dead trees over in front of the art museum. So we're trying to keep a handle on that, so that it is a smooth transition and we don't lose any more plants. We did a residential survey, we received 130 valid responses, you can kind of look at this, it was kind of an even split of that, 24 or 25 percent roughly reported regularly walking to work. We actually thought that was a pretty good number for Oklahoma City. We asked them what kind of businesses they wanted, convenience store, pharmacy, a bookstore. Jim Talbert, who is Chair of the DOKC Board, says they don't really want to buy books, they just want a place to hang out, but nonetheless, bookstore made the list. Car wash was surprising, but pet boarding and grooming, I think we see lots more pet-friendly living opportunities downtown, and so there's certainly an opportunity for the growth in that industry downtown. We also surveyed them about their, what they wanted to see in terms of sites for Spokys. Eighth and Hudson was number one, you can see all the way down to Dewey and Sheridan. Fourth and Broadway is the YMCA. There is a committee that is looking at potential Spokys expansion, and will be evaluating the results of this survey, too. 76 percent agreed that downtown is clean, 86 said downtown is safe, and 94 said I am satisfied with my decision to live downtown. I think these are tremendous numbers. You do have to remember that we are surveying the people who live here, that's what that is. So they're obviously, hopefully, going to be happy with that decision, but I really am proud of the, you know, the high numbers that they think downtown is clean and safe, and that they're glad that they live here. Little bit about the bid budget, our FY 2013 bid budget was about $1.5 million district-wide in actual expenditures, it's really better shown through how we spend our money from 2013 to 2014, it's about the same. The bulk of our money, 43 percent, is spent in clean and safe, and that is in our operational side. And then the next one is marketing and programming, and then we do have some administrative costs that amount to about 18 or 19 percent, you know, from the bid, but we are getting, at least, over 80 percent of our dollars are being used directly into downtown. What we added into our budget for 2014 in partnership with the city is a downtown operations coordinator. This is the position that's helping us maintain Project 180, as well as some of the TIF projects that we're going to be looking at in Bricktown. We're doing some district identification signage, we built a reserve for underground flooding, gee, it might happen again, and also a fund to help us sponsor and help other organizations do some of their events downtown. Some of our organizational goals are to work with the Bricktown Association's structure, goals and marketing. We recently held a, call it a mini-retreat, but some facilitated conversations for two days with the Bricktown Associations and Groups, manage the Bricktown TIF funds, we're also working with Film Row, helping them build capacity- We're also working with Film Row, helping them build capacity with their new organization as they plan their expansion. And then, of course, Project 180 Maintenance and Improvements. We have websites, DOKC and Film Row. DOKC has launched a brand-new website that you might want to take a look at. And Film Row's will be live here in a few weeks. We want to expand Spokys. And then you heard us talking a little bit about the potential retail study that will focus on Park Avenue. Some events that we have planned for 2014, I mentioned the Developers Luncheon. Downtown Employee Appreciation Week is the first weekend in March. Starlight Supper's actually April 10th. Rock the Boat is June 7th. The Downtown Dash is August 2nd. And then Free Ice Cream Day, August 15th. And I'm sure we will add a few there, there, the rest of them. Outdoor Concert on October 3rd. Six Degrees of Bacon, Bike Tours. Automobile Alley has a shop hop that's every third Thursday monthly. And Premiere on Film Row is every third Friday monthly. You've seen this happen all over Oklahoma City where these districts are celebrating themselves one night a month. See it in the Plaza District, Eighth and H Celebration with the food trucks. This is just a tremendous way that we have grown our community, not just downtown, but all over Oklahoma City. And then, of course, downtown in December for the holidays. And you've already seen that slide. And as always, I just want to thank you for your support of downtown OKC. We're in this together. It's a partnership. And I do believe we had a really outstanding 2013 downtown, and we look forward to an even better 2014, and we work on that together. Thank you.
Thanks, Shane.
Your Honor, I just have a quick question for Jane. Some of the comparison charts, you listed downtown, OKC, and metro. And what's the difference between OKC and metro?
The metro region would include things like probably Edmund and Mustang and more. And some of those things that we would consider the greater Oklahoma City metro. OKC would be just the city limits. And most of those numbers we're getting from the Chamber or the Convention Investors Bureau. So it's how they would define those. That's how we define them, so.
Your Honor, Jane, I just want to commend you. That was a great report. Very, it just gives you a great feeling for the future of Oklahoma City. And even though we talked earlier about there are cities who have done some things that we would like to copy, I think we're well on our way to make this a very strong city. I do have a question, since you brought up the GE Research Center, which I think is very important to you, or Jim, maybe you know. Is that, is that just a new group coming together? Or is there a GE Oil and Gas Research Facility somewhere in the other?
No, this is a new research group for them.
So they're bringing in researchers from, they're just starting everything from ground up?
Yes.
Okay.
I really do think this is going to be a game changer more than we can ever even see for downtown and for our community. Because these are, these are high-paying, great jobs that are only going to grow. And that area around 10th and, on 10th Street where they're, where they're starting will be developed.
I agree. And I would like to see before too long, before too many years, where Oklahoma City is hosting oil and gas-related conferences, you know, sponsored by the various oil and gas companies here. And this research center being a very integral part of those conferences. I think it'll be great for the entire state, as well as Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Shane.
Mayors February. And for some people, that means it's the end of winter. Some people, it's Valentine's Day. But for Pete White, it means it's spring training. It's just around the corner.
Time for pitchers and catchers.
Exactly. So in that spirit, we brought Michael Burns in this morning to talk to us a little bit about what's going on with the Red Hawks.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm hopeful that talking about a little bit of baseball helps us all warm up just a little bit. So appreciate the opportunity. I actually, I left copies of the formal presentation. This is something that our organization puts together every year and gives us a chance to go out to key stakeholders in the community, our business partners, our community partners, and just really recap the year. So the presentation today is really just a summary of that whole presentation, but I wanted you to have the full one this morning. We do think that that eyeball-to-eyeball feedback is so critical in talking to the people involved with the team. And it gives us the chance to spend our offseason getting better and preparing for what is this year, April 11th, our opening day. So the summaries, these conversations typically start with, "How'd the season go?" And this year, we had 15 sell-out crowds in the ballpark. Yep. So there were 15 sell-out crowds in the ballpark. We really focused, there we go, we had a real focus on our sales team's efforts to look at our peak games and get the opportunity to really grow the number of people that are coming on the games that people want to come to. So over the last three years, we've had a great trend. We had eight sellouts in 2011, 13 in 2012, and now 15 last year. We've targeted 20 key games this year as our peak games that our staff is really focusing on. So it gives our folks, as they're talking to someone that's a potential buyer at this time of the year and not really thinking about baseball, it gives them the ability to really focus them to a specific date in June or July to make their decision early. As you see, our average attendance grew to 5,700 last year. The nice thing for our organization, we had three consecutive years now of attendance growth. So it shows the interest in the community as far as coming back out to the ballpark and wanting to participate in the Red Hawks baseball. We're actually one of only two teams in AAA baseball out of 30 that's had three consecutive years of growth. So we see that as a very positive sign as far as indicators for where the interest in the team is and how we continue to grow that moving forward. One other interesting thing, we recently partnered with Scarborough Research. And Scarborough, many may be familiar, you know, does surveys in different communities every year. It's, they ask a ton of questions related to buying habits and what people are doing with their entertainment dollar, et cetera. They recently delivered their most up-to-date data set. And when they did that, they said that there'd been over 20% growth in people that consider themselves Red Hawks fans. They've watched, attended, or listened to a game in the last year. And in the seven years that they've done research in Oklahoma City, done the phone-call research in Oklahoma City, it's the highest that it's ever been. So we're encouraged by the number of people that are participating in the ballpark and wanting to come out, whether it's for a Red Hawks game or any of the other number of events that we're hosting throughout the year. Our focus, as I mentioned, it really is on those peak nights. And we really give our sales team the opportunity that, it's a team that's grown to really 20 people in the last three years. That focus is solely on getting people to understand what's going on at the ballpark and to want to come out to the ballpark and getting them to commit early. So we've, we really focus on the affordable products. Those are things that, if we're going to be marketing specifically to families in Oklahoma City and want to be important to the quality of life of our residents, it does have to be affordable. So we've introduced a seven-game plan, which over the last three years has consistently been 3,000, 3,500 or so of those plans that people have purchased in the community. So those are households, those are people in our metro area that are now participating that didn't use to, because the previous option was only a 72-game season ticket, which is tough. I don't even get the chance to go to all 72 games. So it's tough to consider our fans will do that as well. We also, about once a month, we'll target our friends and family nights. We do a unique opportunity, so it's kind of the one promotional offer that we provide. And it gives, again, it's a peak night, it's a Friday or Saturday, it's one that our fans want to go to. And then our six-person group sales team really focuses on over 100-mile radius, they're calling, on groups that may have an interest in doing a one-time-a-month or one-time-a-summer event. So it could be schools with their field trip days, it could be scouts when we host them on the field after a game and let them watch a movie and run around the outfield. Our future Red Hawks nights are always really fun. The teams show up in uniform, get to go out on the field prior to the game, be out there for the National Anthem. We always have to time that very carefully. If we let them out there for too long, then they start chasing each other around the outfield and get in the way of people playing, warming up and throwing their hats in the air. So it's a delicate balance, but it is a great opportunity for those kids to be able to truly get out there on the field and interact with those players. The ballpark experience is critical, and the unsurpassed customer service is one of our five key tenants that we really try to focus on. We've actually taken a stop this offseason, and we're peeling back the layers on everything we do related to our customer. After three years, we wanted to make sure that policies hadn't evolved in a way that didn't have the original intention. We want to make sure our interface with our fans is as positive as it possibly can be. We do a really critical training in March with all of the customer-facing staff. So ticket takers, ushers, people that work in concession stands, all those folks, they have a regular job. And then they come to help us on game nights. So we want to define for them what the customer service element means. And they have such a great impact on people's experience at the ballpark. And we want them to be problem solvers, and we want them to use the principles of Disney University in helping create a great customer experience here at our ballpark as well. And we try to look to add ways that there's great fan amenities also. So the game program, we print that every night overnight, so it's got updated stats, it has a new cover, it has more information about what's going on tonight's game. So that, baseball being a leisure sport, people get the opportunity to kind of page through and see what it is that, the player that just hit the homerun, is he on his way up or is he on the way down? Get some more information about what's going on there. The entertainment element, you know, entertainment's in our lifeblood, it's in our blood. Our organization mandolin has the film and TV studios. And so we really look at the entertainment as an opportunity for 72 nights out of the year, every inning break. Gives us a chance to really do something that makes it fan-friendly. There's not enough baseball fans in Oklahoma City to fill the ballpark day in and day out. We want to make sure it's a great experience for anyone looking to do something with two kids on a Friday night. And so we get the opportunity from, we have one staff member that really focuses on scripting everything that goes on for every inning break. They're in their rehearsal stage right now, so that nothing happens on the field for the first time. And all the punchlines are correct, and the camera angles are right, and the music goes along with it at the right moment. So we've got our mascots, and we've got our entertainment crew. And then occasionally, we'll bring in some outside talent. The top right there is the Superstars, which they do a great job. They'll come through twice a year. It's the combination of an athlete and an animal. They make a big character out of it. So you'll see Manati Ramirez and Harry Canary Jr. up there. But it actually ends up being really fun for the adults as well. And so that's, that's the critical thing, is we want grandfathers, fathers, and children all to be enjoying the experience at the ballpark when they're out there. Being involved in the community is critical, and we understand that we have an important role to play in the quality of life in Oklahoma City. So beyond just the Red Hawks baseball games, we have a number of other baseball events. We've got the Bedlam Series. We hosted two events last year. We had the Big 12 Baseball Championship once again, so we had eight schools from across the region come through. We had to adjust some of the schedules at that time because some of the weather that came through, but we were able to persevere. And then we have a key program with our high school baseball, which will kick off here in just about three weeks. So last year, we had 29 different high school baseball games that we played, basically all in the month of March at the ballpark. High schools are able to utilize group tickets that we have to fundraise in their own community. And then that gives them the opportunity to play a game at the ballpark. So for those that don't go on to college athletics or professional athletics, it's really the pinnacle of their career, to be able to get out in that field and have what is, you know, the great manicured field. We produce it just like a regular baseball game, so we've got the walk-up music and the camera crews are there. And it becomes just a truly great experience for those, for those students. And as you can see, with 58 high schools participating, they're coming from all over the state, which is critical to getting people to the area. They'll come for their game, and then they come back later in the season for the Red Hawks game as they have some sort of spirit night. Other items, we actually were really blessed, the minor league baseball community really rallied around Oklahoma City. And when we had our weather in May, there was a 15-for-15 initiative, which minor league baseball charities had. About 52, 51 other baseball teams chose to give a portion of their online merchandise sales into a fund that then was donated to the American Red Cross here locally. The Pacific Coast League, the league that we're a part of, also donated a portion of some funds raised. And then we worked with one of our partner organizations, the Omaha Storm Chasers. One of the fun things about minor league baseball is if you want to make a statement or do something unique, you usually change your jerseys. So there was, there's an idea that they brought to us. You can see the top right there, we wore jerseys that "We Are Oklahoma." They wore jerseys that said "We Support Oklahoma." We wore them here for a game, we wore them up in Omaha for a game. And then we recruited Tulsa and one of their opponents to do the same. So we had four different teams doing this in different markets. All the teams auctioned off their jerseys and raised some additional funds that went to the American Red Cross. So a great way to kind of continue the efforts that went all the way into August, to make sure we were continuing to talk about the troubles that went on in May. Other items, as Jane, you know, just recently mentioned, downtown in December is such a critical thing. Keeping the ballpark active at a time of year when most ballparks are dormant is great. We had another successful year. This one affected much more by weather than we have been in the past, but it gives us an opportunity to put close to another 30,000 people through the ballpark when, as I mentioned, most are dormant. So the, it gives us a chance to send our groundskeeper away for a little while so he ignores what's going on on the field. But it gives us, we build that great scaffold, and we get so many people to come downtown and enjoy tubing at that time of year. We have the public sessions and the private sessions, which give us the private opportunities for churches and business organizations to do their holiday event, which is always a fun way to do it. Other things that we have ended up hosted, we have a number of nonprofit walks. We have charity events that go out to the ballpark seemingly all year long. And we have a number of those nonprofit walks that occur in September and October. This year, we also had the March of Dimes Headliners Banquet that occurred on the field, on the infield. So that was a really fun undertaking to be able to do that, to raise funds for the March of Dimes. But it gives us a great cross-section of impacting so many of these different organizations as they come to the downtown core, they come to Bricktown and want to utilize the ballpark as their, their home base for doing some of these events. Oklahoma Blood Drive has become, Blood Institute Blood Drive has become one that's become an annual event right around July 4th time. We get people to think about donating blood at a time of year that they don't normally do that. And of course, the Pancake Breakfast, which is a great way to really kick off the fundraising campaign for United Way. This past year, we tried to look at different ways every offseason to introduce new things to the ballpark. We really focused on some of the wayfinding signage, as well as some of the exterior signage at the ballpark this year. Give us an opportunity to freshen it up. Ballpark being built in 1998, it was time to refresh some of those different signs within the ballpark and make the experience better for those guests that were coming out, whether it be for the first time or the 100th time. We also introduced some new food items and then had an all-inclusive element up in our club for businesses that were looking to entertain, reward employees, build new business. They were able to utilize some seats up on the club level to do that. Moving forward, this year, we've invested in some new concourse digital displays that'll happen this offseason going into April 11th, as well as transitioning some of our seating in the lower bowl into a better seating option for our fans. So we're excited to continue to keep things fresh at the ballpark. We have a unique opportunity to really be a platform for so many businesses that want to be involved in the community. And so we look at the opportunity to benefit our community using these partnerships as something that's important to us. The Astros, our parent affiliate, come through every, first quarter every year. They were just recently in town. So it gives us an opportunity to interact with some of our fans, but also hospital visits, do some youth baseball clinics, do a number of things throughout the community in what is a short period of time, but we try to maximize that. Our National Anthem Tryouts are coming up here soon. We go to Penn Square Mall. We get over 250 people the opportunity to audition to sing the National Anthem at the ballpark. So some of you may receive the opportunity to be a judge, if you have that American Idol in you and want to be able to participate here coming up soon. Cooper's Healthy Hawks, Cooper, our mascot, helps us with the opportunity to get into some of the schools and talk about healthy living, healthy lifestyle. Our strength and conditioning coach gives us, gives the students some unique skills that they can take home with them. Some of those things are very easy to implement, so we're able to be out in the community and do that. Our Home Run for Life program with Integris gives us the opportunity, about one time a month, to celebrate a great recovery. That's someone that's overcome a unique illness or something that was, that could have been devastating in their life. They are now, however, recovered from that, and they get a chance to, in the third inning, step up to the plate, take a swing, and run around the bases and celebrate their homerun for life, which is something that's really impactful. It gets all 9,000 people up on their feet. In partnership with Devon Energy, we have a Military Appreciation Program. We're working with families on every game, doing behind-the-scenes tours for families that may have a loved one deployed. We take the opportunity, two nights out of the season, to really do a full ballpark-centric focus on military. And every inning break, we might do some things such as a swearing-in ceremony or welcome-back those that just came back from deployment, recognizing a Purple Heart, recognizing any of the fans in attendance that served or had a family member that served. So the Hometown Heroes Program is really one that's really, that's really important in this community. And Chesapeake has given us the opportunity to recognize volunteerism in the community. So our Community All-Stars Program, there you see an example of First Tee, a couple of volunteers, husband-wife team that volunteer a lot at First Tee. We brought them out, middle of the game, and gave this a chance to raise some more awareness to what that program is. It was one of five that we did last year, as well as thank them for their service. And then we have three other programs that focus on the sport of baseball itself. So we're able to do baseball clinics for children. So we're able to do baseball clinics for children. We had over 500 kids participate in that last year. Our Baseball Buddies program, where kids get to run out onto the field with the players as they're being introduced before the game. Hertz's Grand Slam Mission is a program that we really focus on helping coaches coach, helping those that maintain the fields do so through the expertise of our coaches and our groundskeeper, and then building baseball itself in the inner cities, and so doing some youth clinics with different teams, and that Grand Slam Mission has really taken off over the last three years. Finally, we talk a little bit about baseball. The team on the field did really, really well. They actually had the best record since 2008, had 82 wins this past year, so we were provided some great players and some great talent on the field for those that were coming out and keeping score and truly paying attention to the wins and losses. It was a fun year for people to be Red Hawks fans this past year. And with that, it gives me the opportunity to thank you. I have a unique experience with 30 peers in AAA across the country and 16 in our league. I have an understanding and appreciation that not all of the other teams have such a great relationship with their city and work so closely with them, so truly value the relationship we have with the council, with the city manager's office and the staff and mayor, and looking forward to a great year moving into 2014 as April 11th is our opening day.
All right. Questions for Michael?
I just have a comment. I deal regularly with the Oklahoma City Public School System and their athletic director, and he cannot say enough for the cooperation and help that Oklahoma City Public Schools' baseball programs have received. You know, they're very challenged, most of them inner-city kids, a lot of them never played baseball, don't have a bat, don't have a glove, don't have anybody. Baseball's kind of lost its magic for inner-city kids, I think, and that help has really been appreciated, and I want to thank you too, because it's a big deal to me personally. You know, when David said you were here probably when he talked about what he wanted was spring, well, spring's here. The pitchers and catchers reported this week, and it's on its way, so.
You're right. You're right, and that program, that Grand Slam Mission that I referenced earlier, and it actually came out of feedback from this presentation a couple of years ago from you. And so we've worked very closely with Keith, and he's given us a lot of direction and guidance on how to grow baseball, whether that be at the coaches' level, the groundskeeping level, or the students themselves.
David? I'd like to compliment the Red Hawks organization. You know, it truly is probably as good of a family event as you'll find, and you can't say that with all sporting events. Sometimes you hear bad language expressed among the fans, and I just haven't experienced that. It's a great time, and it's truly a great family experience. And you've got a great set of pictures on that one level in the club area or something, some great historical pictures, and I would just encourage you to try to expand that. There's a group that, when Jackie Robinson came in to play an exhibition game, that group of players is still, there's a picture in there. Max Nichols, who used to be with the Journal Record here, was a bat boy when Jackie played and has some great memories and wrote a great story about that opportunity. So you've got some great photographs, and hopefully they can just keep growing in number, and maybe expand it to some of that great high school and college players who've gone on to play in the majors. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. When's opening day?
April 11th.
All right, April 11th. Mark your calendars.
That's right.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Is that it for city manager reports? We have two people that have signed up for Citizens to Be Heard, Yassin Atzwi.
Hi. Hi. My name's Yassin Atzwi. I live in 3551 Northwest 22nd Street. By the end of October 2013, past year, I was approved my SPUD with some special licenses, and I came up to a dead end, and the reason today I would like to request the city to cancel my SPUD. I'm here to say, to summarize the story of 12 months' work, just to summarize as much as I can. The reason I want to cancel my SPUD is because it was just mainly taken away from me. For the past 12 months, I worked very hard on this project. It was a dream project. I was so excited to finish it and design it. I started from day one, my program, my plans, from A to Z. The first time I chose this land, this vacant land, there was, nobody was interested in it for a few years, and then I made contact with the owners, which are the sellers, and I came up to an agreement with them to apply for the zoning and have everything done. So mainly what I did, I did the survey on it, I did the engineering, I did the architecture on it, I did everything on it. And by the time I was approved here by the zone, and at the same time we were working on the engineer, and we came up to a difficult issue. The city is doing, spending multimillion projects on the sea channels. The sea channel is going from, is going from almost Fortin-MacArthur all the way to Fortin-Meridian, and is going down to the Canadian River. Most of the developers, they developed around Ann Arbor, they were lucky. The city did Phase 1 study and Phase 2 engineering study. My property fell exactly on Phase 3. Half of it is Phase 2 and half of it is Phase 3. So I was required by the seventh floor to submit Phase 3. And Phase 3 takes quite a bit of time and money, which I was fixing to do it anyway. And with multiple meetings with Mr. Adhir and Mr. Blaine Shiffel, they're city engineers, they decided they're going to do Phase 3, and it's going to take the next few weeks, maybe another month to be finished. While me working on this, my contract is expired with the seller, and the realtor, she made some phone calls, and there is some, two buyers, they were really interested in my SPUD and everything else, because I was sharing everything with the seller, my plans, everything. So two buyers, they were very interested, and they brought even cashier check on the table, and one of them brought cash. So I was a little bit under pressure between the buyer and between the seller. I'm in the middle. I was everything, I did everything from the beginning, and the reason I didn't want to close on the property, just because Adhir said to hold on, because we have to, we cannot even submit our construction plans. We have to make it developable first, and we cannot develop it. We can develop half of it, which is the back, but the back there is railroad, so we have no interest. On the front is the main thing. In order for us, for us right now to develop it, we have to fill the ground with four feet and 3 inch, which is more than half million dollar work, so it's not even worth it. The reason here today, I just came here, I would like to cancel, I did everything from the beginning, and I would like to cancel my licenses, they have special licenses. I passed through the planning commission twice. It was a very hard meeting for me, too many questions. I had to, it was detailed plans, detailed pictures, everything was detailed, too many questions. I passed everything, and I see this project is just gonna, it won't be done. I tried to finish it. I offered so many things to the buyer, even paying him if there is any problem, he can pay me back, but still does not work that way. Some other people, they're really interested in my licenses, and I worked for, which is past 12 months. You can just come and prepare on these licenses. You have to have background education, you have to be certified, you have to be, you have to have at least 10 years, 15 years' experience on this field. Recycling is very, very good business, but can be very harmful if you cannot do it right. Earlier, I was in the back, and I heard the lawyers, they were talking about the guys. The recycling they're doing is wrong anyway. They have to deploy the airbag. The airbag needs to be deployed before the car can be crashed. They have to know where the mercury is, but most of the guys, they don't do it right. My business was a late-model business. Here in City of Oklahoma City, there is only three businesses that are doing it right. The Roy's, they are doing it way, way wrong. They don't apply with federal regulations. There is the EPA, there is the Department, DEQ, Department of Environmental Equality here in Oklahoma, and of course, there is the city code and city regulations. The planning commission was very happy with my plans, with everything. The zoning was very happy. They reviewed my plans, they reviewed my program, which is almost was a book, and I wrote it myself and detailed. And this project, I was working with multiple people on it. My engineer was involved, my architect, my surveyor, and my legal counsel to make this project work, which I succeed on it. I just came up to a thing that is out of my control. My engineer's legacy engineer, and he did the seawater pump there, so he was familiar with the area. And SRB, they contracted, they were contracted for the design of the channel, so two engineering companies. And my engineer had a very good relationship with SRB or either with the seventh floor, and we were on communication up till last week, and likely, I was fixing to do that study, and it just, we got away, it's out of my control. And the sellers are in extreme pressure to sell the property to other buyers. They, you know, before, nobody was interested in the property. I was negotiating for four months. Nobody would work into a property that has no paper. And now they found everything ready, and they just want to do it. If I was a seller, it's an fateful business for me to do it like that. If I was a buyer, it's unethical for me to work into something I see somebody worked for for 12 months. So I'm here in front of the city council today. It's something I did from the beginning. I prepared, I just want to cancel it. I have a very strong education. I'm almost going to finish my, I'm certified by the National Institute of Aromalif Technology, and I just want to cancel it.
Thanks for coming down. Sorry it didn't work out. Marilyn Long?
Good morning.
Good morning, Marilyn.
I'm here on behalf of Northeast Resource Center.
Need your name and address.
My name is Marilyn Long. The address, the center is 1415 Northeast 23rd, which will just east of the Governor Mansion, between Kate and Funshio. I'm here this morning because we started a partnership with Langston University on a community garden, which is very much needed in that area with health issue with eating. We did the fence, the garden on last year. This year, the Eagle Scouts came out and thought they would put a fence around the garden, because we have a lot of stray dogs. They go in and tear up the garden and everything. Well, on February the 9th, I was cited for the fence, because they said they had gotten a, I guess a concern called in on the fence, that someone in the community wanted the fence down. The fence is within the legal right of the property. It's not coming out to the street, it's not going behind our property line. I do have a drawing of the picture I would give. The Eagle Scout took their time after school and on weekend to build that picket fence around the garden. Not only did they take their time and their energy to do that, but they used their own money to purchase the supplies for the fence to go around the garden. Last year, we have a food pantry that we use the garden for, and last year, we fed over 5,000-plus individuals with the help of the garden. We are a nonprofit 501(c) organization. We receive no federally, no state, no city funding. We work through networking and through my funds. The pantry is financed by some partners to help us, but most of the things in that food pantry that go out to the community is funded by myself. I'm here on behalf of Northeast Resource Center petition my city council, John Paddis, that if you would take a look at the picket fence, come out and take a look at the garden. I think it's within the rights. We don't have the money to hire an architect to draw the plans. I have done everything, every footwork that I can do to try to find what the city is requiring me to do. To get an architect to draw that plan, I'm looking at $300-plus. And to be honest, with the organization not being funded, we just don't have that kind of money. But the health issue in that area, this garden is very much needed.
Marilyn, why don't you let us work on this issue a little bit, okay?
Okay.
We need some more information. We can tell your heart's in the right place, and it sounds like you were trying to do it the good, the right thing, and let us figure out what we can do and how we can help.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. We have executive session. We'll be back.